I call this pre-meeting briefing of the CFB ISB Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on November 7th. The purpose of this pre-meeting is to conduct a briefing session with administrative staff regarding the agenda for the regular board meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM on this date. For the record, board members present are Tara Hibachek, Eliana Garza-Rosas, Kim Brady, Cassandra Hatfield, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, and me, I'm Randy Shackman. We constitute a quorum and will conduct business on behalf of the district. The next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. I've been advised there is no one that has signed up for Audience for Guests in the pre-meeting, there is some for the later meeting. So we will move right on to our next item, which is administrative reports. I'm joined at the diocese by our Deputy Superintendent, Brian Murch. Dr. Eldridge is out of town tonight, and so Brian, welcome, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Shackman. We have one administrative report, it's item 5M, Consider Approved Spend Authorization for Furniture, Multi-Campus Minor Innovations, and that will be presented by Interim Director of Purchasing, Shannon Allen. And thank you, Ms. Allen, for coming in.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Murch, board members, this item is a spend authorization for our renovation projects, our Bond 2023 projects. This allows Corey and his team to procure furniture as needed, without waiting each time for a purchase. They're asking for the amount not to exceed $2 million, but all purchases will be made through our vendors and co-op vendors, and everything will be bond fund compliant with all of those contracts. So this would just enable them, like I said, as those projects get done, they could procure that furniture as they go along to get those spaces functional as quick as possible.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? No? No questions? I have one. Is there any possibility that going ahead and authorizing this procurement would give us the opportunity to buy potentially in advance and take advantage of sales?
Yes, and also what it will do is, you know, the way that furniture is going right now, you need to be put in that queue. It would allow them to go ahead and get us in the queue so that we can get that furniture, be in line for that furniture, and get it, you know, in a timely manner.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there are no other reports.
All right. Board members, the next item on our agenda is a review of the consent agenda. Does anyone have questions about or interested in pulling an item from the consent agenda? None, then we'll go forward with the consent agenda as presented. And that may be one of the fastest pre-meetings we've ever had. Well, I'm gonna tell Dr. Eldridge she can leave more often. This brings us to the end of our agenda for the pre-meeting session, and we are closed at 6:04.
Good evening, everyone. I call this regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:00 PM on November 7th, 2024. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing as Trey Kroom from Redeemerne Cover Church, provides a message followed by the pledges being led by Carolyn Benavides and Kim Brady.
Well, y'all pray with me. God, thank you for the privilege it is to be here this evening. Wanted to thank you for the school district and leadership. You and your word values and honors those who accept the call to lead and serve others. As such, you protect them. Protect them from this unity arrogance or confusion. Remind them of your truth and love. Guide them with discernment to make decisions with staff, students, and families in mind. Help them to make every effort to maintain unity through the bond of peace. Remind them that they are called to lead for such a time as this, and that they have a community and that they're not alone. Thank you for this opportunity to gather together this evening. Your sons' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal, which is high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in an open session, with the exception of a few items that the Texas government code says we should do in closed session. These typically are personnel matters, consultation with attorney, and real estate. Let's go on the record tonight. Board members present are Tara Herbatschek, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Cassandra Hatfield, Eliana Garza-Rosas, and me, I'm Randy Shackman. We do constitute a quorum and may conduct business on behalf of the district. You notice Dr. Eldridge isn't here. I'll address that in a minute when we get to my remarks. We're very pleased to have Deputy Superintendent Brian Marsh assisting me here at the dais tonight. Thank you, Brian. Before moving to the next agenda item, I would remind everyone that the board accepts comments from the citizens of the district and from district employees. Persons who wish to speak during Audience for Guests must have completed an online form and submitted it electronically by today's posted deadline, which is 5:00 PM. When the board addresses Agenda Item 3, Audience for Guests, those who have signed up will be invited to the podium to speak on behalf of their idea and to the board. Next item on the agenda is Item Number 2, Special Presentations and Recognitions. Think we're turning this over to Carolyn?
Good evening, President Shackman, members of the board, and Deputy Superintendent Marsh. I'm honored to present tonight's student recognitions. Over 1.3 million students enter the National Merit Scholarship Program each year, taking the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, also known as the PSAT NMSQT, to vie for recognition in college scholarships. In September, the 2025 NMSQT commended scholars and semifinalists were announced. CFBISD proudly boasts 18 commended scholars and nine semifinalists. These exceptional individuals represent the top 3% and 1% of test takers nationwide. Their achievement is a testament to their hard work, dedication, and intellectual curiosity. Committed scholars may receive special corporate-sponsored scholarships, while semifinalists are competing for National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $26 million to be awarded in the spring. Please join us in recognizing our commended scholars who were able to join us tonight, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names. From Creekview, Vincent Nguyen and Hannah Um. Representing Early College High School, Hayden Reynolds. From Ranchview, Cameron Kunanan? Kunanan? Kunanan, apologies. Cameron Kunanan. Erin Mulhoutra. From Smith, Christine Lee. Our Arle Turner folks, Yuvraj Bandari. And Ayon Salmon. And Rayan Salmon. Sanjay Sundan Durham. And now please join us in celebrating our National Merit semifinalists in attendance tonight. From Creekview, Lindsay Rowe. Early College High School, Ben Nguyen. From Smith, Cora Swinford. And Arle Turner, Drov Paul. Karishma Pila. Koshik Votukar. Congratulations to these talented students. Let's give them another round of applause. And board members, if you could please stand and move toward the middle of the dais for a group photo. And for our parents, after our group photo, you can just make your way back to the lobby to join your student.
What an amazing accomplishment, the way they score on those tests. Just fabulous. I would never know, but it is great. Thank you for allowing us to honor you tonight. I want to begin on the next agenda item, which is the president's report. And first I want to point out that Mr. Michael Gallup, who is the CEO of Metrocrest Chamber of Commerce, met with a board member and recently requested that we develop a liaison with Metrocrest Chamber. They would like to work together with us, especially with potential legislative priorities and some other things. Eliana Garza-Rosas is priorities and some other things. Eliana Garza-Rosas is our representative coordinating legislative priorities. She has volunteered to take this role as liaison with the Metrocrest Chamber, and I'm going to make that appointment for the remainder of this school year. Thank you for volunteering, Eliana. Obviously, Dr. Eldridge is not here. Dr. Eldridge, Kim Holcomb, Dr. Ramos, and Amy Bridges are celebrating in an opportunity that is fantastic as well. In the whole of the United States, 356 schools, that's high schools, middle schools, elementary schools, charter schools, you name it, 356 out of the entire United States have earned the distinction of a Blue Ribbon School for this last year, and that award is being presented in Washington, DC. And Dr. Eldridge, Dr. Ramos, the former principal, Amy Bridges, the current principal, and Kim Holcomb are there. And so we are excited and gratified that Blair Elementary has been named a National Blue Ribbon School. And if that's not enough excitement, here you go. On Friday night, this coming Friday night, Creekview High School will be playing a football game against Newman Smith High School. Yeah. Hey. Anyway. Excited that playoff births are on the line for both schools. They both are 6-1 in their division, and it is going to probably be the game of the century. There are several issues with weather, especially targeted for the morning time. Because of weather concerns, the game start time has been moved from 7:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So be sure that you pay attention to that 5:00 PM start. All students in CFB, if you wear your school T-shirt, admission to the game of the century is free. All right, and boy, we need to pack the stands. I don't know that we've ever had an opportunity where two of our schools competing for playoff spot like this in the last game of the season. That's exciting. Finally, on my President's Report, it has come to my attention that there is a small number of what appears on the surface to be area, I don't know what to call them, malcontents, and that they're trolling our district, sowing seeds of discontent and division. Their attempts to spread negative messaging about CFB and many of our personnel are mostly not accurate. They are filled with distortions, half-truths, and malicious fabrications. This is extremely unfortunate. It is with resolute confidence that I assure us all that despite what this small few are saying, CFB is doing well. In the past few days and weeks, I have visited on a number of our campuses, almost half of them, and I have personally spoken to numerous teachers, administrators, age, paraprofessionals, and support personnel. What I constantly hear and what I see is how well this year is going and how amazing our district is. There's proof all around us. While many of the surrounding districts are facing drastic enrollment and financial problems, CFB is in small ways growing and holding our own. Recently released state accountability numbers confirm that our trends are going in the right direction. And even in the midst of the financial struggle which we are enduring, the one thrust on us by the state in their ineffective funding policies, and with the exponential growth of non-English learners that we've encountered, we're serving all students effectively every day. CFB, I'm proud to say, is doing well. We remain a top, highly desirable DFW area school district. We are not, nor do we claim to be perfect, but our priority of high achievement for all students is alive and well every day. From my colleagues on the board and throughout our nearly 4,000 personnel, their daily work of fair, of equitable, of results-oriented education for every student is and will be the ongoing goal of CFB. And frankly, don't let anyone tell you different. Thank you. This concludes my report for the evening. Next item on our agenda are committee reports, and first one up for that is, let's see what I see. Are there any committee reports from any board members? Tara?
I'll kick it off. This is the report on our liaison with the District Bond Oversight Committee, and Ms. Brady and I are the liaisons for that committee. The committee met on October 22nd, 2024, and there was not 100% attendance of the full committee members, but there were a great representation of our community for that team that we have supporting us on these efforts. There was discussion, and the committee confirmed Katherine Carlin is the chair of that committee for another year. She had been acting in that role for the committee, and she'll continue to do so. Additionally, we went through some presentations as far as what the board is going to see for future bond projects, packages coming up. Additionally, two of the architects gave presentations on the renovations at Blalock and Turner, and presented some conceptual renderings that it was good to see. So yeah, there was a lot of great discussion and questions for that. And the next meeting, I wrote it down somewhere, is January 28th, I believe, and so we'll report back after the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Herbatschek. Ms. Benavides.
Thank you very much. I attended the Shack meeting with Ms. Leek and her team. A lot of community members were there, and we were so excited to be able to participate in Hidden in Plain Sight, which is a grant that Ms. Friedman received from the Educational Foundation, and it's such a great opportunity to teach parents about what is hidden in plain sight. So it was a good meeting, really excited, very engaging, and I was very happy to be able to participate.
Great. Thank you. Any other reports tonight?
As always, I have amazing things to say about the Educational Foundation. We meet once a month, and we have some pretty amazing things in store for our students and our staff. I'm going to let Ms. Donowall take over and do her presentation, but I just wanted to say the incredible work that you're doing is astonishing and amazing, and all the time and effort that you guys put into it, it means a lot. And Mary Lovell, thank you so much for, as always, being there. I was able to attend the Book Vending Machine last, it was last week. And it's so beautiful to see that with our kids, to get the books and how they earn their tokens. It's such a beautiful sight, but thank you to the Civic League for giving us the opportunity to have it in our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Garza-Rosas. Any other committee reports? Mr. Marsh, I think you're up for the next item, District Announcements.
Thank you, sir. The Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority recently donated 20,000 items to the CFB Health Services Department. Their generous donation will provide health supplies for our fifth graders. In addition, DFW We Care gifted 100 pallets of cups, activity kits, mini whiteboards, markers, and activities to Central Elementary. These items will be used for student and staff incentives, and will have a tremendous impact on the district as a whole. We want to thank our partner for their donations that will benefit our students and staff. Recently, we had a workaversary celebration. It was held at the Nancy Watten Technology Center on Tuesday, October 29th. The reception honored employees with 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service in the district. Combined honorees celebrated more than 5,400 years working in CFB ISD. All honorees received a gift and a voucher based upon their years of service. Smith High School Queen to Queen Symposium. This week, Smith held its inaugural Queen to Queen Symposium. This special event was designed to support African-American and Latina girls on a social, emotional level. Assistant Principal Malcolm Watson organized the event, which featured female leadership throughout the district, serving as keynotes and facilitating small group breakout sessions. At the Rotary, it was Veterans Day Luncheon, students, staff, and our own CFB ISD veterans attended the 21st Annual CFB Rotary Luncheon. CFB students from Turner, Creekview, and Early College High School attended the event, performing a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem and posting the colors. Our students did a fantastic job. We also had two Veteran Day celebrations. Dr. Stephanie Jimenez, the principal of Newman Smith High School, and Chad Hunter, the principal of RL Turner High School, both hosted Veteran Day celebrations today. They did an excellent job in celebrating our veterans. The JROTC choir band orchestra and dance teams did an amazing job of performing in honor of our veterans. The talent that we have in our district is just truly amazing. Our kids, they're just above all of our peers. So I have one last thing I want to say, and I want to welcome Ms. Karen Rodriguez to the team. She is our new Chief of Communications, our Chief Communications Officer. She's been here for two weeks, and we're fortunate enough to get her from Dallas ISD, and she is just fit in and just a great fit, and we just welcome you, Karen, and we're just happy that you're here. And that's my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marsh. We're going to have an update from PTA, so Conchivia Collins.
Good evening, everyone. Deputy Superintendent Marsh, President Shackman, and the esteemed board, I'm Conchivia Collins, and I am the proud first Vice President of Leadership for your CFB Council of PTAs. Let's start with the PTA motto. To make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. I emphasize "all." Our district membership is growing. We currently have 5,645 members on our PTA. We still need, although that's a large number, we still need 812 members district-wide to meet our numbers from last year. We encourage all of you to please consider joining your local PTA, whether it is at the elementary, middle school, or high school level. We please, 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 take a moment to consider joining us. We currently have eight CFB champions who joined all 36 of our PTAs in the district, and we also have eight champions who signed up for all schools in one of their high school theaters. Thank you to everyone who has joined and supported PTA. To get more information about how to join, because I know you will, because I asked you to, please take a moment and visit our website, which is cfbpta.org. Again, cfbpta.org. Our big next event is our Reflections Art Contest. If you know anything about PTA, we take a lot of pride in the art that comes from our districts, from our schools, and most importantly, from our students. This year's theme is Accepting Imperfection, and we look forward to seeing all of the submissions from our talented district students. Our schools have already started submitting their winning spreadsheets to us, and we're looking forward to celebrating our winners on January 15th at the Nancy Watten Center. Our next delegate meeting will also be held on that day. Our electronics recycling fundraiser is coming soon, so please be on the lookout for further details that will be posted on our website, our social media sites, and through email. This month, we conducted a challenge for October for one primary school and one secondary school. We had several primary school entries, but no entries in the secondary school category, so we decided as a board to award two elementary schools. The requirement this month was to submit pictures and descriptions and information about any fall family engagement events that were held either in September or October. I would now like to announce our winners. When your name is called, or when your school's name is called, could you please come up to get your certificate and then join me in the lobby immediately following my presentation to take a picture. Our first primary school award goes to Davis Elementary. Davis Elementary held several events, including Parent Orientation Night, Welcoming Family, New Families Program, The Grandparents Breakfast, Fun Friday Family Lunch, Parent Volunteer Training, Walk, Bike, or Roll to School Day. I should have joined in on that. That sounded fun. Dolphin Dad Squad, the Moms Meeting, Metrocrest Mobile Pantry, and the Strong Dad Event. Davis Elementary. The second primary school winner is Rose Mead Elementary. Rose Mead Elementary hosted a successful PTA fundraising celebration this fall and kept it going with a great PTA meeting, including speakers for parents and students dealing with stress and anxiety. They also hosted a walk and roll to school. How did I miss these events? And finished the month with treats for teachers and an incredible fall carnival. It was incredible. Great job. Our November challenge will be announced shortly, and details will be provided through email, through our website, and of course, our social media sites. Thank you so much for your support of CFB Council PTAs.
Ms. Collins, thank you for your report. We so appreciate all the efforts of PTA.
Thank you.
Our next report is from the Education Foundation, Donna Wald.
Good evening, President Shackman, and esteemed board members, and Mr. Marsh this time. It's a privilege to be here this evening, and on behalf of the Educational Foundation, we thank you all for your support. Tonight, we are excited to provide some updates from the Ed Foundation since you heard from me in October. We've been very, very busy with our grant programs and scholarships in full swing. Some of you may not be aware that the EF was recently featured on several media outlets with our newest Book Vending Machine initiative. Thank you, Karen Rodriguez, CFB Chief of Communications. We're getting this important story out in the news. I think it was your second day of service, wasn't it? Yeah. She's a crapperjack. We, along with our partners from the Civic League, were featured on CBS 11, Fox 4, in the Branch Herald, and in the Carrollton Leader. We are now up to nine book vending machines, and we won't stop until we have one in every school that wants one. Earlier in the fall, we were contacted by one of our CFB grant programs with a very special need. A parent education program to help our student families and our community in the prevention of youth substance use. Without further ado, in honor of October's National Youth Substance Use Prevention Month, join us as we present a special check to the CFB Safety and Security Department in the amount of $7,800 the amount of $7,805 for its Hidden in Plain Sight Drug Initiative. We'd like to ask Rachel Freeman, Executive Director of CFB Safety and Security, to come forward and accept this check. Thank you, CFB family, for everything you do and for giving us the opportunity to support your initiative. While Mrs. Freeman has come forward, we'd like to get everyone gathered for a quick photo, if we may. Foundation Board members, including Ms. Garza, Ms. Garza Rojas, trustee, and Ms. Benavides, and directors in the, other directors in the audience, I see Alex, I see Michael, Pat Enlos here. If I've missed any of you, please feel free to come forward and join us in front of the dais, dais?
Dais.
For a picture. Senior district leaders, please join us below the dais as well. Trustee, President Shackman, and other trustee leaders, please gather behind the dais. You know I can't keep a secret, so this is really exciting.
Thank you, Ms. Lovell, and thank you always to the Ed Foundation for all that you get done for our students. It is amazing. Next item on the agenda is our Audience for Guests. Before we move to Audience for Guests, we're going to pause for a 10-minute break, give you a chance to stand and stretch, and then I'll go. So, it's 7:32 now, so we'll be back here at 7:43.
One minute, please, one minute. We are back in session at 7:43. Our next agenda item is number three, Audience for Guests. Before I begin, I want to remind our audience members of the Board's procedures for handling Audience for Guests. Anyone interested in speaking in person must have, and they have already completed, a form submitted online through our website, and had to be done by 5:00 p.m. deadline today. Each speaker will be allowed to speak once during Audience for Guests. Speakers designated as a stakeholder will be allowed to speak for a maximum of two minutes. That is, less than normal, we usually say three minutes, but there are a significant number of people who have signed up for Audience to Guests, and the Board policy and procedure says, in the purview of the President, and in the interest of keeping an orderly meeting, I can make that decision to reduce the amount of time, and tonight, we are going to give two minutes to each speaker. Please keep all comments and criticisms courteous. Please avoid using any profanity or whatever, refrain from making personal attacks. The attorneys, as they prepared our script, has said that we are not to discuss students who are not your own child. Disruptive discriminatory comments will not be permitted. In the event of judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or a charge against an employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop, and direct you to proceed to the school's district formal grievance policy. If a speaker is seeking Board resolution of a specific complaint that should be addressed that way, it can be found online under District Policies, DG, BA, FNG, NGA. Grievance forms can be attained at any campus administration office, or at the central administration office. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, please note that the Board will not respond to public directly, and will address any issues or agenda items as deemed necessary when they're listed only on the agenda. The timer will be shown on the screen in front of you, and we will begin when you arrive at the podium to speak. Again, speakers' presentations tonight are limited to two minutes. We will begin with our stakeholder comments, and the speaker's presentation, as said, will be limited to two minutes. So, I believe these are in the order that we received them. The first speaker is Mr. Richard Fleming.
Fleming, former school board for Carrollton Farmers Branch from 2009 to 2018, 1986 R.L. Turner graduate. I currently serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the great city of Carrollton, and I love this city, and I love our school board. The Civil Rights Movement was a social movement and campaigned from 1954 to 1968 here in the United States to abolish legal racial segregation, discrimination, disenfranchisement in our country. I was born in Denison, Texas in 1967 during the Civil Rights Movement. As a toddler in Denison, I lived in Tower Lane Housing Projects, which was a federal housing project for blacks only. Just three miles to the east was another federal housing project for whites only. As you can see, our federal government in the past was the biggest perpetrator of segregation, discrimination, and disenfranchisement in our country. 1978, our family moved here into Carrollton Farmers Branch School District. I was in the fifth grade at the time. My family bought a house on Valwood Parkway in Farmers Branch, Texas. I was attending, I was attending a majority, 99% black elementary, to now attending a 99% white elementary here in Farmers Branch. I remember my mother and father setting me down and telling me, "Son, be careful when you go to your white friend's house, because not everyone is going to want you in their house." Some of the examples of racism that I experienced here as a kid, I visited a friend's house one time, only to have his mother say, "No, this N-word cannot come into our house." Second time, I was harassed, followed up Josie Lane, and called the N-word by two white guys that were in a truck. And the third time, I was in the sixth grade, Valwood Elementary, representing the sixth grade, and I had to beat this white girl twice in order to become the sixth grade champion here at Valwood Elementary. Here's a copy of my sixth grade certificate from the Dallas Morning News. I said all this, guys, to say that there is racism and discrimination here in our country. I just wanted you guys to act. The complaint that I came, I had the complaint validated by five administrators. Thank you, Mr. Shackman.
Our next speaker is Nicholas Ornellus.
My name is Nicholas Ornellus, address 1117 East Vandergrift Drive. I'm a former teacher and coach here. Mr. Randy, CFPISD Board and Admin, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight before I address Item 5T and any attempts to cut me off. Let me preface my statements by acknowledging CFP's new guidelines for speaker participation you plan to enact tonight. I'm also aware that I'm not a school board member, and that my time has started about 27 seconds ago. It's unfortunate that I have to dedicate the time out of my now two minutes to explain this, but I digress. Although I acknowledge the new guidelines, I also understand the rights afforded to citizens by the First Amendment, a right to freedom of speech, the Texas Constitution, and the Open Meetings Act 4205. Specifically, a Board may not prohibit public criticism to the Board, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. You have the right to warn and then remove me if I'm being disruptive. The definition of disruptive is causing trouble and therefore stopping something from continuing as usual. Apart from yelling, screaming, physical or verbal threats, or disabling the audio equipment I'm currently using, I'm not sure how I would disrupt my own speech. CFPISD's guidelines citing name-calling and rude or slanderous remarks are not legally enforceable. Additionally, comments and remarks are only slanderous if they're false. If you'd like to take time and use one of your patented five-minute breaks to consult with your lawyer before I proceed, please take the time now. I came in here a little over six months ago asking for help to protect abusers, to protect me from abusers, any victim in the district. The fact that I'm here now would lead others to make assumptions. Thanks for the two minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Louis Palovo.
Thank you for the time to address the Board. Thank you, President Randy and trustees. So, I don't have any prepared notes. I think I need to speak from my heart. I also am someone who am very appreciative of our school board and what's going on here in our district. So, my wife Daisy and I, Daisy's a current sitting council member for the city of Carrollton, we moved here 16 years ago specifically to be in the school district, specifically for McCoy Elementary, which we loved dearly, we live behind. We left the rough streets of Oak Cliff, where we had a very rough upbringing, to move to a quieter and nicer neighborhood. In our time here at CFPISD, we've had, we've experienced nothing but greatness from this district, and I wanted just to thank you, thank the Board, thank everybody for taking the time to run, to serve, and to be a part of this great community. I prefer to not live in the past. I want to make sure that we move forward and we look forward to the future. I believe all this nonsense that's going out is a distraction to our district, and I want to make sure that we continue to move forward. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes to come up and just offer my full support. I think Dr. Eldredge is doing an amazing job. Being a minority and a Hispanic myself, I like to judge people by their fruits, and all I see from Dr. Eldredge is some amazing fruit. She's in the community. Anytime we're out and we see her, we see her interactions with our students, with our families, and we're so appreciative to have Dr. Eldredge here in the district. So, I thank you, Board, and thank you for all that you do, and we're, again, so appreciative. And I just want to speak from my heart for a few seconds, just to let you know that we appreciate you, we support you, and we're also at your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Palom. Our next speaker is Melanie Graves.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melanie Graves. I actually attended R.L. Turner project at Vivian Fields Elementary School. I come to you tonight not only as a parent, but also as a concerned parent. And I just want to say this for the few seconds I have. Parents cannot protect their children from everything, we know that, especially from school bullying, but internal bullying at your watch should not be allowed. We must call out bullying even when it hard or comes with a cost. Just because you could be silent don't mean you should. The most important thing to remember, just because you can do something, don't mean that you should. I do have a quote, "Progress is impossible without change, and those who cannot change their minds cannot change anything." And that quote is from George Menor Shaw. I implore you to conduct an extensive investigation, let's do right by these children. I feel like they deserve better. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Richard Fleming, for bringing this to our attention, and thank you for the work that you currently do for the district and that you'll continue to do, and thank you, everyone on the panel, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Graves. Next speaker, Janine Holland.
This is going to cost me some time, but God knows, I love this district. I was with it for 25 years, spent five years in Dallas, so please take this. Those of you who know me know it really comes from my heart. Good evening, Board members. I would like to ask you to consider or to actually hire an external investigation team to investigate allegations that were made against our superintendent, whom I do not know. The reason why is because if these allegations are false, we need to know that. She does not need to be a topic of just coffee chatter and all of that. She deserves that. We deserve that. But an external, an external investigation gives you several things that an internal doesn't. I want to give you a couple of examples of what has happened with me over 25 years. I'm going to give you two of them. I was a part of internal investigations and tell you what happened, and it doesn't make me look very good, okay? The first time, they were investigating an administrator who told a girl, quote, "All you're going to do with your life is put meat between two buns and ask the customer, 'Do you want fries with that?'" This girl, her mother went to church with me, by the way. Mother was incensed. She went, called Dr. Griffin, and that afternoon, that administrator came by and said, "Did you hear me say that? I chose to protect him, not the child." And I'll have to live with that. I really will have to live with that. That was a lie on my part. Another involved, two coaches were going over this, who, one of them made a kid with a physical disability run, even though the child cannot run, has a physical foot deformity.
We need to wrap it up. Your time is concluded.
Okay, so, anyway, that one, he couldn't say why he wasn't going to correct her grade, so they had another coach, who was on medical leave, come up with a plausible fabrication of a story to tell the OCR, and they were found...
They really do need to be through.
Okay, I'm going to do it.
Thank you.
That teacher, that coach, was the Teacher of the Year, and rewarded with that.
Next speaker is Jimmy Wisner or Wisner.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jimmy Wisner. I stay at 17833 Mary Margaret Street, Dallas, Texas. That is Carrollton School District, Dent County. I, I'm up here, I've been, I have a youth sports organization called Wildcat Youth Sports. It's been around for 25 years. And Wildcat Youth Sports is a nonprofit organization that I'm the founder and owner of. And what we do, we've had every sport from football to basketball to track and field, also baseball. And I've had hundreds and thousands of kids that has come through the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District, that has been a part of our organization, and believe me, you know, all different types of challenges. And it's been one of my life's greatest pleasures to be a part of that, I'm a small business owner as well. I was saying at the second, I also had six kids that's come through the Carrollton Farmers Branch School District, Newman Smith High School from 2005, and I had two twins that graduated in 2024. That's currently at Mississippi State University. But I'm not here about my children and about the fact that me and my wife is so adamant about student athletes, and that's what my program is about. But it's about my passion for children. And I came up, I'm compelled to speak because of that. And because of the lack of investigation with Ms. Eldredge that I've been seeing over and over again, as one person spoke about, I feel that it would make me feel a lot better. Most importantly, it would also make everything come to a full front if we get the truth. One way or another, speculation is not good. As my bishop has always said, "A little bit of truth can cure a whole lot of pain." And let's start today.
Thank you, Mr. Wisner. Leighton Gamble is our next speaker.
President Shackman, other members of the Board, district leaders, and community members. My name is Leighton Gamble, AKA Small But Mighty Dissenter, and I reside at 1505 Northridge Drive in Carrollton. I've had the hardest time coming up with the right words to say since the last Board meeting appearance in October of 2023, but trust comes to mind. The definition of trust, according to Merriam-Webster, 1A is the assured reliance on character, ability, strength, or truth of someone or something, and 1B, one in which confidence is placed. Sadly or madly, I can't decide at this moment which is more true. This community unfortunately can no longer place their confidence in the trust of this Board. I have voted for and supported many of you sitting here tonight. Mrs. Hatfield, until last year, I placed my confidence in you. And Mrs. Garza Rojas, I voted for you because I believed your placement on the Board would make a difference. With each moment that you sit idle and complacent to racist and derogatory comments made by Dr. Eldredge from April 25, 2023, and the most recent eight-page detailed accusations surrounding the poor hiring decisions and reassignment sent to the Board on September 24th, you harm each one of the 24,230 scholars currently enrolled in CFP and the 1,789 educators employed to teach them. As a parent, I have watched the mass exodus of excellent educators and leaders leave to other surrounding districts. School districts where their teachers and leadership feel seen, safe, and supported. You see, some of the most influential people of my life are educators from Carrollton Farmers Branch. Some of them still employed today, but probably not for long. It is no longer an easy decision to continue to keep my children within this district and a current conversation within our home of what we are going to do next. The culture of Carrollton Farmers Branch is no longer what it once was, and that starts from the top. Any of the culture that has remains is to the credit of the staff and educators that work within the walls of our schools. I stand here again, begging you to wake up and hire an independent third-party investigation due to the previous comments Dr. Eldredge made and the new eight pages of allegations against the current leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Latonda Cherry is our next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Latonda Cherry, and I am an elementary school principal here in CFPISD. I am the proud principal of River Chase Elementary. I've been a part of this great district for 11 years, as a parent, a teacher, a literacy coach, an assistant principal, and now a principal. I'm also the wife and sister-in-law of two CFPISD employees. All three of us represent the Great West Side of CFP. Our public school district stands out for so many reasons, and at the heart of it is one simple truth: We are here for every child, every day. The mission of CFP, a diverse community of global learners, is to empower scholars to acquire lifelong knowledge, skills, and values that prepare them to compete in the world marketplace while contributing to their community. We work hard to ensure that each of our students, regardless of their background or circumstances, have access to high-quality learning, support, and opportunities. First and foremost, our teachers are dedicated professionals. As a former CFP teacher, I know our teachers are trained, not just in academics, but in supporting the social and emotional needs of every child. We believe in our students' potential and encourage them every day to grow, dream, and achieve. Our teachers do way more than just teach. Our curriculum is designed to prepare students for the real world. As a former literacy coach and curriculum writer, we focus on critical thinking, problem-solving, and collaboration. We have very strong programs, such as STEM, arts, dual language, the STEAM Gifted and Talented Academy, athletics, and we nurture well-rounded individuals. Another key strength is inclusivity. We believe that every child should be seen, valued, and celebrated. And the big truth about CFP is that we are one big family. In this district, we believe in the power of education that transforms lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Lisa Sutter.
I'm Lisa Sutter. I am here tonight to address the allegations being presented by Richard Fleming to discredit the superintendent and the school board. Mr. Fleming's unsubstantiated attacks towards the school district and superintendent should not be given any weight, as the allegations are made through an anonymous letter, and it's not an official formal complaint, but a letter unsigned and unsubstantiated. I am a community leader, Board member, to several entities, including one with over 14,000 members and a former council member. This former complaint would not pass any legal test. I am disappointed at Mr. Fleming's continued assault on our school district's integrity and his irresponsible allegations that have no place in our community. Has someone said, "How many times does he get to come back and speak to the same issue?" As a guardian of a child attending CFP now, after a 28-year break between kids and now a great granddaughter, I have to tell you, that has been a wonderful experience, and I can't say enough about how great the teacher, staff, programs are in our school district, and I couldn't be more proud of being a part of it, and the trust we have in you all. Thank you, and if I have a little bit more left, I'm going to say, I would like to also say, "Job well done" to the students that were honored tonight for their academic excellence. That was great. Sorry I rushed through that, because I thought it would be too long, but thanks again for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutter. Tracy Battle.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Battle, and I'm proud to serve as the principal at Delby Davis Elementary. I celebrate being a member of CFPISD since 2018. And when I joined CFPISD, I joined an exceptional team of dedicated educators, and I can't compliment enough the team of principals that I work with. They are feisty, and they are passionate, they are about the business of our kids. We have teachers and staff who show up every single day for one compelling reason, and that's because they too believe in our students. There have been some notable changes in CFP from personnel to curriculum and everything in between, and in the spirit of transparency, I can admit that I don't agree with every decision that our district makes or every decision that we choose to take. My husband, who I chose and I love dearly, will share that I often disagree with him too, but I believe that's how healthy personal and organizational relationships work. I am not here to endorse or denounce any particular individual or group of individuals. What I am here to do is champion all the hard work and all the great things that are happening in CFP for our students and our staff. It's incredibly disheartening to see the work overshadowed by a narrative that casts an unfavorable light on all the great things that are happening in our district. Is there an opportunity for CFPISD to improve? Absolutely. Does it have a cadre of committed leaders who are passionate about the students of CFPISD? Certainly. Healthy organizations and healthy relationships are built on transparency and trust. That's simply how dynamic teams work. I choose to be a part of this team, and the way this team plays as a whole determines the success of our district. So, to the Board, thank you so much for your time and your attention, and most importantly, to your continued commitment to CFPISD.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Lori Parker.
I'm usually at the stadium on Thursday and Friday nights. All right, well, good evening. My name is Lori Parker, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Though I currently serve as an elementary principal, my roots are deep in Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD, and I take great pride in our district. I first began my journey in CFP in the late 70s as a new fifth-grade student at Country Place Elementary, followed by Vivian Field Middle School, and finished as a graduate of R.L. Turner High School in 1984. I was an office aide for Ted Polk while he was an assistant principal at Vivian Field. I taught across the hall from Nancy Watten, who became a dear friend, and funny enough, even my grandmother attended high school with R.L. Turner himself. She would tell us, we always called him Leon. Upon deciding to go into education, I desired to return back to CFP where I began my teaching career at Janey Stark Elementary. From there, I spent many years as a teacher before becoming an assistant principal, and years later, an elementary principal. I have two kids who I have raised in our district, both whom attended Country Place Elementary, Ted Polk Middle School, and Newman Smith High School, and received exceptional educations led by influential teachers and dedicated administrators. Attending CFP schools, growing up in Farmers Branch, working in the district, living in Carrollton, and putting my kids through school here, I can confidently say that our district is here for students. Despite what may circulate about public education, it is evident that our district is driven by a desire to see students succeed, and is the people in CFP who have personally, personally shaped the careers of myself... and is the people in CFB who have personally, personally shaped the careers of myself and my own kids. My time in Carrollton Farmers Branch has spanned over 35 years, but to this day, I love what I do for the same reason that I went into education, to help students. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Joel LaPuma.
Good evening, President Shackman, Mr. Mersch, and members of the board. My name is Joel LaPuma, and I have the honor to serve as the area director of school leadership, where I help principals in their efforts to support students, their families, and their staff. I have served in CFB for 20 awesome years. Many years ago, when I was a principal at Creekview High School, there was a Facebook page created that was nothing but negative. It was all negative, and it talked about posts about drugs, fighting biases, negative aspects that we see in our society. So what did we do? We started the first Facebook page in CFB, and it did the opposite. It was nothing but positives, and it was a hit. The kids loved it, the teachers loved it, and I believe it helped with student achievement. So recently, as you know, there's been some negative attacks coming into our district, and I would just like to say this about Dr. Eldridge. Dr. Eldridge and her leadership team, and yes, I'm a part of it. We're student-centered, and we're working hard to support the 1,789 teachers, the 37 principals, and the many departments that it takes to run such a large organization. I think I'm gonna have to start talking fast. Is it easy? No. Leadership and educating people is not easy, and it is not for the faint of heart. But is it important? Absolutely, yes, it is. Maybe one of the most important aspects of a young person's life is their education from birth to 18. Today, I was at Newman Smith celebrating Veterans Day, and I was, and we recognize those that have been served, and I want to include educators to be recognized, and they're deserving of being served. Dr. Eldridge has come in with a vision to continue the strong educational history of CFB and to keep CFB as one of the best districts in the state. Over 20 years, have there been changes? Absolutely. There have been changes. But she will lead our district as we get ready for Vision 2030. So in honor of CFB and those that are serving or who have been served, I'd like to close by saying stay positive and encourage one another to few the proud. Team CFB.
Thank you, Mr. LaPuma. Calvin Capps.
Good evening, President Shackman, Board of Trustees, Mr. Mersch, and community members. My name is Calvin Capps, and I have the pleasure of working in this district for 15 years. I'm also a resident, and my two children currently attend Rainwater Elementary. My wife, who is also a staff member, and I feel incredibly grateful for the community we are a part of. Today, I just want to share my gratitude for the incredible environment this district creates for our children and families. From early childhood through elementary school, our programs do an exceptional job of fostering growth, confidence, and true love for learning. Our children were fortunate to begin their educational journey in the Child Development Academy, a resource that's available to staff members in our district. It was a gift to know they are, they had a caring and supportive foundation and a place committed to their well-being and early development. Watching them transition from that setting into elementary school has been wonderful. The values they gain early on, curiosity, empathy, resilience, have continued to grow, and I see firsthand how these same qualities are encouraged and celebrated throughout their school experience. This district is more than just a place of learning. It's a community that shapes character and nurtures potential. As a parent and a staff member, I feel deeply appreciative of all that's been invested in our programs and resources. It's a privilege to be part of a district that makes such a positive impact, and my wife and I are excited to see what the future holds for all our children. Thank you for your time and for supporting our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. Mr. Randy Lester.
Good evening. I'm a longtime citizen of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. I had two students, a boy and a girl, to matriculate through this school system. And what I'm concerned about is negative comments. It's okay to comment, but the impact that it has on students. I can tell you my story. I grew up in Birmingham, Alabama, born in 1958, middle of the Civil Rights Movement, Jim Crow. I attended Hensler High School in 1976. In my 11th grade geometry class, my geometry teacher asked me, "What do you want to be?" I said, "An engineer." She said, "Well, Randy, you know, they will not, many schools would not allow you to attend. They will not accept you." Okay. I found the school that would, HBCU, Alabama University. Five years later, I complete their engineering and technology program, which is Bachelor of Science. Also, in the 10th grade, I'd like you to know, I read a book entitled, "The Autobiography of Malcolm X." And when Malcolm X was in the grade, his teacher asked him, "Do you know, do you know, I don't want to bore you." But anyway, the teacher asked him, "What do you want to be?" He said, "I want to be a lawyer." But the teacher told him, "No, you can't be a lawyer. You need to learn to do things with your hands," and things like that. They will not accept you as a lawyer. So my point is this. These negative comments that have been made to these young black males in the school system can have a negative effect, a very negative effect. I became an engineer. I found a way, or rather, Malcolm X became, what, a drug pimp, things like that. So realize the impact, and I hope you emphasize, I'd like for you to emphasize that you take action, at least do an investigation, whether it's true or not. I don't know whether it's true or not, but let's, let's take some type of action.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Francisco Miranda.
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, members of the board, and Mr. Mersch. My name is Francisco Miranda, and I'm currently an area director of school leadership in our great district. We've heard from a few of our CFB ISD family members who have served for years in our district, but I'd like to bring you my perspective after only completing my first three months and a half here at CFB. This is my 20th year in education. I've served in a nearby district of over 143,000 students as an elementary teacher and middle school administrator for nine years, and here recently in a nearby district with over 31,000 students for 10 years as a middle school and high school administrator. As you can see, I don't move districts often. However, in August, I found my new home here in CFB ISD. I've been extremely impressed in what has been established here in our district, and it is truly an honor to stand here before you today to express my deepest gratitude to Dr. Eldridge, our esteemed leader for her exceptional guidance, vision, and unwavering commitment to the success of CFB ISD. Personally, I am profoundly grateful for the opportunity to serve alongside the school board and with a superintendent that is extremely invested in our CFB community and whose number-one goal is a commitment to providing the best quality education possible for all of our scholars. It is a privilege to contribute to our vision for a brighter future for all of our students. Thank you for your tireless work, your inspiration, and for the opportunity to partner with you in shaping a positive and lasting impact on our schools and our community. The future looks bright in our district, and I feel blessed to be in CFB ISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miranda. Next speaker is Harry Bailey.
To the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Harry, and I proudly work as the webmaster here in CFB. Prior to this, I taught engineering and cybersecurity for seven years at Polk. I also served in our district's diversity council for two years. And prior to that, I worked at NASA for seven years in mission control, supporting 21 shuttle flight missions to the International Space Station. Earlier today, I attended a Veterans Day program hosted by the Rotary Club, and they have a thing called the four-way test. And with this four-way test, they have four pillars. They ask the questions, "Is it true? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned?" In these next few moments, I want to talk about that phrase, "Is it true? Is it truth?" I grew up in a black church, and at this point, if I was a pastor, I would have you turn to your neighbor and say, "Is it true?" I'm not gonna have you do that. But I did see a social media post. I did see a social media post in the last month that had me concerned. I won't read all of it, but it said, "The CFB president and board members have put all black people out of CFB ISD." Definitely had me concerned. Again, I asked the question, "Is this true? And what is the litmus test to determine if this is true?" Here's my one point. You can't assess a ground-level situation from 31,000 feet in the air. My encouragement for anyone in the community who is that high in altitude looking at what's going on in CFB is to get on the ground level. How many problems can be solved by a simple volunteer application to the district? How many stereotypes can be extinguished by meeting with a board member or a CFB ISD employee? How many fears can be dismissed by consistently showing up and being present? You see, on the ground level, I have mentored countless kids in this district.
Mr. Bailey can wrap it up, please.
I sure will. I'm sorry. I'll leave you with this. On the ground level, I have used my platform as a voice for the voiceless and a, and hope for the hopeless. And on the ground level, I've also witnessed my fellow colleagues, including Dr. Eldridge, do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Second, Harry, Harry Clinsey. Is Mr. Clinsey here? Okay, we will go on then. Dawn Rink.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Rink, and I choose CFB as my professional home. This is my 22nd year working in CFB, all as a school administrator. I have worked with all the grades, kindergarten to 12th grade. I have implemented special services programs such as the academic bridging class, and I have worked many years with the LEAK program. All to say, I have seen and been a part of high expectations and excellence for all in every grade, K-12, in every department. A quote from a CFB parent, "If ever there was a perfect school, it would be in CFB. The staff and teachers truly love the kids. They go above and beyond the call of duty. I feel my son received so much more than a great elementary education, but a great start in life. The teachers and staff teach and exemplify character and passion for learning. My name is Dawn Rink, and I proudly choose CFB as my professional home."
Thank you, Ms. Rink, and that concludes the list of speakers. We appreciate the opportunity to hear from all of you. Next item on our agenda is non-action items for discussion. First up will be the facilities master plan update, and we'll turn it over to Chris Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman, trustees, Mr. Mersch. I've been hoping all day I was not going to say Dr. Eldridge right there, so.
I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Tonight, we want to update you on the Facilities Planning Advisory Group. As you can see there on the screen, the first meeting we held was last week. It was October 29th, and you can see the timeline there. The next meeting is a week from yesterday, November 13. We have two more set, one as a backup, December 18th. The first thing that we did at the first meeting was to really let the group know its, its purpose. And you see it there. Facility Planning Advisory Group is setting the criteria for CFB to make portfolio decisions and recommendations for the board. And that term "criteria" is really key. It's not the goal of the group to determine what consolidations will take place. It's not, it's the goal of the group to determine the criteria that's gonna help guide those decisions and those determinations, and there's a lot of data to look at while we get there. And so that, that is a crucial component that we pointed out at that first meeting. To kind of recap what we talked about at that first meeting, it was really a why and a what. It was kind of high-level, and the, and the why was the two primary considerations of how we got here to putting together this Facility Planning Advisory Group were financial constraints and excess capacity. And then the what, you know, what's the, what's the goal of the group was, was again, that criteria, to allow us to make portfolio decisions, to, to set that criteria so we can make the portfolio decisions and come back to you as a board. Meeting one was really intended to go through finance, and Ms. Suttled at a wonderful job. Really kind of her first introduction, if you will, to a lot of folks in the district, kind of talking through finances, really to inform and educate with regard to the finance. Deficit budgets are something that are dominating the landscape, not just in North Texas, but throughout the state. CFB, we have adopted two consecutive deficit budgets, Fall '23, Fall '24. And she also did a wonderful job delving into different factors that go beyond simple finance questions because you can't, you can't simply point to a budgeted amount and, and add and subtract. She, she got into things and explained population growth, birth rates, enrollment comparisons, budget trends, and projections, and shared the projection that after the 2930 school year, no raises, no changes in any of the factors that I just mentioned that are, shows a negative fund balance after that year. And so really, groups were sorted into focus on three different perspectives. You see them there, fiscal responsibility, student outcomes, and optimal facilities. And then those groups, we will continue with those three perspectives and likely broaden them among all group members as we continue. Meeting two and three, to kind of preview those as, as we're coming up, we are going to welcome back our partners from Wolfert. At meetings two and three, they're going to return. That is, of course, the group that's helped over the course of the last year with facilities master planning. And we will begin studying as a group, the, looking at the facilities planning information that they helped gather over the past year, the, the, the data that led to, you know, 90, more than 9,500 empty seats throughout the, throughout the campuses in the district. And that information, again, is critical for the, for the Financial Planning Advisory Group to set the criteria so we can look at that portfolio. At those four meetings, you see what we are looking at and working with Wolfert to set on the agendas. You've got utilization, condition, location, and cost for quality. Utilization, really to look at district-wide utilization. It, it's got to work globally, you know, regional utilization of all of our schools serving the same grade levels, and then factors we'll look at, you know, cost per student within that utilization. You know, there's comparisons that'll show that schools that have the same square footage, but due to capacity, cost per student, you're looking at 31% more to run some campuses based on capacity numbers. Condition, we'll look at age inadequacy. Make sure within that, the alignment within the current teaching practices, right-size versus undersized teaching and support spaces, classroom size, the number of support spaces, quality of support spaces. We'll look at location of, of, of facilities, proximity to students. We want to make sure that they serve all the areas. We don't want areas to be overserved or underserved. We certainly don't want deserts where no one, you know, one neighborhood, five miles from a school. Everything else is two miles from the school. We want to manage that. And then within location, the flexibility of the site, site size, the entrances to the property, exits from the property. And then we'll begin looking at cost for quality, the appropriate staffing levels, the prioritization, the alignment of the programs, location of programs, and really the optimal levels within, within those areas, total enrollment to financially support the model school. And so again, at meeting two, we will begin looking to analyze the data and begin developing that criteria and then work to gain consensus. And meeting three, again, work on gaining that consensus. The timeline for that Facility Planning Advisory Group, October, December, we're in the midst of the advisory meetings now. December to January, you see comprehensive report development. And, and that's the advisory group criteria, how we fold that into the facility portfolio, incorporating demography numbers. Looking at that as rezoning possibilities, communication materials. All of that'll take place from December to January. February, a board presentation that will cover that comprehensive report. And then February, also listening tours, those areas that may be impacted. March, board vote. And then March to April, registration and enrollment. We did want to provide the perspective of meeting one through the lens of an advisory committee member. And someone is here with us tonight who can do that, specifically from the teacher's perspective. So Melissa, would you come up? Melissa Clark is at Farmers Branch Elementary. And ask her to come forward and share her thoughts on, on the process of meeting one and, and, and share so you guys can hear her take.
Much shorter than you. Good evening, Mr. Mersch and members of the board. First of all, fourth graders are usually my audience. Adults aren't my thing, so I'll just do my best. And my name's Melissa Clark. A little background about me. I've been teaching twenty-two years, all twenty-two years in CFB, all at Farmers Branch Elementary. I'm not only a teacher in the district, but I'm also a product of this district. I attended Janie Stark, Vivian Field, and Aral Turner. I also have four children that have attended or are currently attending schools in this district. I was chosen to join the Facility Planning Advisory Group, which had our first meeting last week. This group is made up of district personnel of all types, parents and students, and community members. Everyone has a unique perspective to add to the group. CFB is in a challenging position where the lack of funding from the state is having us make changes to continue and oper, to continue to operate in an effective way. Over the years, the amount of money given by the state per student has not increased. However, the cost of almost everything else the district needs to run efficiently and to put students first has increased. The district put this advisory group together to get input from many different perspectives before making changes that will affect many. The group is split into three sections, students, finance, and facilities. The discussions last week were not only about what we need to do as a district with facilities to save money, but also about how this impacts students in the long run. The students and staff remain at the forefront of the district's decision-making, and I appreciate the opportunity to give my perspective to the leadership which will help make the difficult decisions ahead. I look forward to the next few meetings and learning more about what we as a district will do to make sure that we are in the best position possible for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
My green light went out. Any questions?
And it's really just a statement. Thank you for the update, Mr. Moore. I appreciate it. And thanks for the members of the community and our staff and others that took the time to attend the meeting. You know, in the presentation and mentioned there's, there's money, you know, talking about money, but I think there's also other resources that we have in our district that, you know, for a while, I think we've just, we're at a place where we need to have this evaluation. And it's about utilizing our teachers, you know, to the best of their abilities and what they can do in providing them the right spaces, the right, you know, makeup in our building so they can be their best and we can support them. You know, yes, money is a, a big part of this and the issue that not just CFB, but if you watch the news, a great majority of surrounding districts are in. But I think this is also a time for CFB to really take a hard look at all of our operations and make sure we're running efficiently and effectively for the best outcome for our students, to best represent our taxpayers and utilizing their funds that they've entrusted us to. And this is just a, a opportunity to relook and reset. And I appreciate all the effort that's gonna go into this. They will be hard discussions. They're hard discussions and hard decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batschik. Other questions, Ms.?
I just want to echo, thank you for the presentation and for the updates. I really appreciate it. Over the past several months, in the spring, the board has been listening and engaging in conversations with Wolfert, who's helped us look at things. And now, I think we find it really important to lean into our community and hear their voice and what they see because ultimately, what we have been entrusted with is the students in our community and the staff that work in our community and support these kids. And so, over the next several months, I have no doubt it is going to be tough. But the way that this community comes together to show our kids and our teachers that we support and value them by putting a plan forth that can make a difference in the future is gonna be critically important. And so, I would just ask that, as you're in the community, that you think positively about how we can use these changes to better for our students. Because we want what's best, and this is not gonna be, it's gonna be tough. But it's what's needed and necessary so that we can be more efficient and focus our efforts on the kids and on the staff that serve our students.
Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. Other questions? Mr. Moore, thank you for your presentation. Our next agenda item is 4B, our first rating, and we're gonna turn things over to Carla Settle.
Good evening. Mr. Shackman, Mr. Mersch, Board of Trustees. I am so excited to present a happy report card from the finance operations for the school district. Before I delve into all of the required information to put in front of you, I would just like to take a quick moment to recognize the staff. I'm gonna embarrass them and make them stand up. I know, roll your eyes, Carla. Go ahead. But this is their report card. They have done a fantastic job, and I'll spoil the end surprise. They got a hundred. And it's just a lot of good work that deserves to be recognized. The first reading is the rating system that our Texas Education Agency has developed way back in 1999. It has morphed over the course of several years. But it does just require that it's more than just the audit report. It's about how you manage your finances. So it goes into some of the deeper dive of the ratios. And it compares district to district on an even playing field. It has a range of, of indicators. In this last year, we got one more. But every now and then, TEA decides not to score one, so don't be surprised when that pops up here in a little bit. But I'll just go over the highlights of, of what this report card entails. There are some critical indicators. This is the no-pass, no-play list. The critical indicators, if you fail one of these, you are on the no-no list. And, but the major one that, of course, we all get very connected with is that annual financial report, making sure it's filed on time, that there's an unmodified opinion expressed in the audit, and making sure we stay compliant. Those are very serious. And, and, you know, the basics of being good at our job. The other ones is where you kind of get into those solvency indicators that drive a little bit further to, to maybe what some of the board members were alluding to is, how do you know you're doing a good job? Well, this is one of them. Your unassigned fund balance. That's a, a one that I like to look at quite a bit. Do you have enough cash on hand? Can you cover short-term debt? Do revenues exceed or equal expenditures? Are you budgeting revenue accordingly and actually receiving all of it? And what is your long-term solvency? These are the, the deep dive into the finances that help us understand the work that we're doing and if we're doing a good job. And so, this year, number ten was not actually scored due to some accounting changes with the Government Accounting Standards Board. And there's one more a little bit later on. Let's see. Okay, a little bit more on solvency. It talks about a correlation of future debt requirements and the district's assessed property value. This is where I like to give a little credit to our assessor-collector and all of the excellent reports she provides me to make sure that eighty percent of the local revenue that's generated is accurate. The thirteen is also the administrative cost ratio, which might be of note to a lot of community members. Are we appropriately spending money on administration or instruction? And this is the one I always like to see full points on. And then a student-to-staff ratio, always at the forefront. And then indicator fifteen wasn't scored this year, but we would have received full points anyway because we are accurately projecting our pupil projection and their attendance. So even though it wasn't scored due to accounting rules, I always like to note that we would have gotten full points anyway. When it comes to competency, I can't tell you enough about how fantastic our business services team are. They would always get this. They would always get a hundred from me, and not just because they're my team, but because they're really that good. Three percent of accuracy on entering our annual report to the team's data is, is not a hard thing for this team. They're, they're very accurate because they have good partnerships within the district with technology in that team as well. From the tests that I have spoken to as we're actively in an external audit and all the historical reports I've reviewed, I've never seen much material weakness at all of internal controls in CFB on any management letter. Same goes for the compliance for grants, contracts, and laws. And we do require with all our required postings. And we discuss hard things before it comes time to decision, and that's what number twenty is. It's are we accurately addressing any material revenue changes before we adopt our budget? And finally, we are not on the list to receive an adjusted repayment schedule for the foundation school program. And that brings us down to our hundred on superior rating for the district. Like I mentioned before, we do comply with all required disclosures, including the employment contract and the total reimbursements for the superintendent and board members. We don't have any of the other three required disclosures to report as far as compensation, gifts, or any kind of business transactions between trustees and the district. And this is a very small slide, but I just wanted to take this moment to represent, thank and recognize the good stewardship of this board and how you're very great at setting the tone from the top about how to attend only required trainings and travel only when essential. And even to Ms. Hatfield for receiving scholarships to offset some of these trainings. It really makes my job a little easier when you set the good example so that we can hold the line on the rest of the job. Let's see, the last thing I wanted to show you was a little bit about how we're outpacing our neighbors. And we talked a little bit earlier about how neighboring districts are suffering under some revenue deficits. Well, when you have a strong core and a strong history, you tend to rise to the top there. And then with that, if you have any other questions about the first report, I would be happy to entertain them.
Board members, any questions about the first report? Yes. Ms. Batschik.
Thank you for presenting the great work by you and your team. I'm thankful for y'all. But could you please clarify on the slides for the public, the definition for the first report of total reimbursements? And what that is actually reflecting?
Yeah, it absolutely doesn't mean necessarily that as board members you were directly reimbursed. A lot of that is expenditures that the district pays on behalf of the board members for the required trainings that help you be a better board. So yeah, not everybody had, you know, a check, but most of it was required trip, travel expenditures paid on behalf of the board members.
Any other questions? All right. Ms. Settle, we're going to ask you to stay put and give us our monthly financial update.
Well, good deal. So we are just rounding out the first couple of months of our, our financial year. And I'd like to take the opportunity to highlight a few fun drivers, what drives our revenue, and how we're going to go about saving costs this year and how we will be approaching next year's budget calendar. I think it'll inform how you look at our finances this year. Some of this has already been said in reference, but I'd just like to throw up a graph. This is from the 2022 Demographers Report. And it shows that there has been a slow and steady decline in student enrollment. Student enrollment and attendance are the two main drivers of revenue. You look at over ten years, losing fourteen hundred kids is a big deal. But even just looking at the last five years and losing three hundred and forty-nine students, that's a missed opportunity of $2.2 million of the basic allotment. So I'm just gonna let that sit for a little bit because now we're gonna talk about a little bit of nitty-gritty, the most recent stats from Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. I presented a little bit on this to the advisory committee. When you think about students and attendance driving the funding formula, you have to budget conservatively to ensure that you don't fall short of revenue, revenue projections. And for the 2024, '25 fiscal year, I want to stick a couple of percentages in your head. Ninety-one percent, that is what we budgeted our average daily attendance at. We're very under-budgeted on, on the number of, on the, on the percentage of daily attendance because we are exceeding enrollment and they are attending higher. School finance is not for the faint of heart. It's just saying that we budgeted conservatively so we wouldn't fall short at the end of the year. And that's a really important thing to, when I looked at the first report. We meet revenue projections because we have a conservative projection assumption. Federal, state, and local revenue round out $297.5 million to support our thirty-eight campuses, over four thousand staff, and 4.5 square feet of instructional space. When you think about the things that affect our delegate balance of revenues and expenses, the ninety-eight hundred seats not filled by our scholars requires us to evaluate how we use every dollar for space, time, and the sourcing of goods to support student outcomes. We use these types of data, these data points to drive the decisions that we make. And when you think about students, our students' characteristics have been changing. We are now sixty-six percent economically disadvantaged. That means there's a strategic spending requirement that we have to meet for those students, for students that are emergently bilingual. Special education students are, have special services that have them, some very specialized and expensive services, but are essential. And every one of these characteristics here are required by the state in the spending formula. And all that to say is that while we have a very real issue to address, the decline in our student population since 2018 is not as sharp as our neighboring districts. So as we go forward, we're going to be very strategic in how we adjust our budget allocations to match the formulas, even if it's not adjusted for inflation. I wanted to lean in a little bit on this slide because it looks like we are the drivers of our own revenue, right? It looks like we generate eighty percent of our revenue. But there is a little fun fact about the state of Texas and how they fund schools. Even if we were able to keep all eighty percent of that $300 million, we still owe what they call recapture, oftenly referred as the Robin Hood tax. So we have to, again, stay very attuned to students in the district and how often they attend. and how often they attend. And here's where I'd like to talk a little bit more about how we'll save and address cost saving strategies. Because that ending fund balance, that solvency factor that we talked about in the first report is what I have a laser eye focus on. CFB ISD has a legacy here of strong financial position. You look at 2021, or even prior to the pandemic, the district was in a very healthy place. And it is my commitment to this board and to this district to keep us in a healthy place. So that means we have to make some tough decisions together. So I look forward to your support in maybe adjusting some staffing ratios to drill down to the specific drivers to make sure that our budget allocations are aligned to those revenue factors. And then I'll try to give you a little good news before I go. I want to talk a little bit about the Child Nutrition Fund because it's very difficult to give you an accurate projection of where revenue is going to land after only two months of attendance. And snapshot was last week, or the week before last. So before I can give you that, I'd like to talk a little bit about how you can predict a little bit about one fund with the behavior of another. So child nutrition, in the first forty-three days, every green bar you see is an uptick. And you see a lot of it is in free breakfast. And you also see in high school, middle school, and in some elementary areas, you see it as an uptick as well. That means there are more kids showing up on time, running through that free breakfast lane. There is more secondary campuses with breakfast carts. That means kids have full bellies in class on time. Just like to point out, every time a kid's in class and on time, that's good for the general fund. And so this is one indicator to show how are we going to do this year. It's because we have a healthy child nutrition program, being very successful in the first forty-three days of school. So I'll bring a few nuggets like this every time I can so that you can join my fascinating world of facts and figures. But I think it's important to learn to your district from the numbers perspective to be able to support with data some of your decisions. But looking forward, we have a very aggressive plan of study when it comes to position analysis, establishing those staffing formulas, having those hard conversations about what the positions will look like, how many there will be going forward. And of course, we will be taking a lot of the advisory committee recommendations into account before we get ready for the heavy lift in January. And that's when the big part of the budget calendar starts. My team and I will be meeting again with all seventy-plus budget managers, asking them, how do you know you're being a fiscally responsible budget manager? And helping them quantify that in a one pager that you will be able to review. There's a payroll calendar development part of that that is an important driver of what the salary budget, which is eighty-five percent of your budget. And so we need to make sure that that is online first. And then going down through the spring, you'll see formula staffing calculations fleshed out, the payroll snapshot, and then non-payroll budget allocations for both campus and departmental. Whenever you see April, June, we're going to factor in some, some big numbers to help drive the final assumptions. Any kind of TASB salary study recommendation should be ready before June. I'm going to push them real hard. Preliminary taxable values will be ready in April. And you will see preliminary budgets and final payroll snapshots before we close out for June. In July comes certified taxable values, which is the driver of the final tax rate and a final adoption of the budget. So a little bit about how the finance committee will be informed and how the trustee workshops will be seeing the presentations. The finance committee has a robust overview role whenever it comes to the budget development. They should stay informed throughout the whole process. And then in the trustee workshops in April, May, and June, you'll see the major components of the budget being reported here. So with that, I'll leave that there. Do you have any questions?
Board members, any questions about the financial update?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to reiterate, echo the words of Ms. Settle. We have an extraordinary business team, and I would put this team up against any other team in the state. We are truly blessed and thank y'all very much.
Second that. Ms. Settle, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
And next item on our agenda is D, the Dual Credit and Advanced Academic Update. We're going to turn this over to Ms. Stacy Carroll and Dr. Ruth Shackman.
Turn that thing on, sorry. It's always a joy getting up here and finding out where I am. All right. Good evening, President Shackman, Mr. Morse, and members of the board. I'm Stacy Carroll, Executive Director of Advanced Academics and Oral Languages. And joining me this evening is Dr. Ruth Shackman, Coordinator of Dual Credit. Tonight, we're going to discuss AP UT Onramps and Dual Credit programs, highlighting the advantages of each. We're also going to share the latest enrollment and success data for those as well. Advanced Placement, UT Onramps, and Dual Credit are three programs offered in CFB designed to challenge high school students and provide them with opportunities to gain exposure to university-level coursework with the possibility to earn college credit. Because the amount of information on this slide is obviously really hard to see, and it was hard to get it, to be able to look at it on different slides, we decided that we would use a little tree and get you each a copy so that you could use those as comparison as we're discussing. So those have been provided for the board. And this will also allow Dr. Shackman and I to move quicker through the program logistics and really spend time focusing on some of the student success, which is our celebrations, and we love to have those. So as you review this document, please take note of the key points. Who teaches the courses and how are they assessed? What training do teachers need? What are the advantages for students? And what should they keep in mind when they're choosing which course to take or which program to be involved in? How can students earn college credit through each of these programs? And how might these programs affect CCMR for our district accountability? This chart is a reference that's available for counselors, for teachers, and for parents and students every year as they are working on their spring course selections. And it's also available on the website. So most of you are aware that Advanced Placement is a program that is covered by the College Board. Their open access policy ensures that no student is excluded from the chances to take AP classes, the chances of promoting an equitable and inclusive educational environment for each one of our students. The unique benefits for students who participate in AP courses is access to explore a variety of interests at no cost before they enter any university or college. Also, academic recognition through the College Board Recognition Program is something specific to AP. And guaranteed college credit for any student who earns a three or higher on their AP exam and attends a Texas public university or college. So for example, let's look at how valuable the last benefit I mentioned can be for our families. Based on the National Student Clearinghouse, we know the top five colleges that CFB students typically attend or are most frequently going to are Dallas College, UNT, University of Dallas, Texas, University of Texas at Arlington, University of Texas at Austin. Okay, those are the ones that we find most of our students are going to. Let's see how three different students use their exam scores in AP Spanish Language and Culture and how that would work in three different situations. Sarah takes an AP Spanish class and earns a two on the exam. She's going to UT Arlington. At UT Arlington, Sarah is going to receive eight hours of college credit in Spanish Language Arts and Culture. Jacob takes AP Spanish Language and he earns a four on the AP exam. He's going to attend UT Dallas. He's going to receive nine college credits before he ever attends college, before he ever steps foot on that university campus. Leila takes AP Spanish and she earns a five. That's pretty awesome. I'm thinking she's one happy Longhorn to be because she's headed to UT Austin where she is going to receive eighteen credit hours. That's a minor in Spanish before she ever gets to the campus. And that is through opportunities in AP that are available to students in our district because of the programming that you support. So just to recapture AP policies, obviously, they venture from college to college. You can see that we're not in control of that, but we can see that there is a definite great benefit. And we can also see that even at a score of a two, students do benefit, not only because it shows that they're college-ready, but it also shows that they can earn credit with scores in twos. All right, so moving on, before we look at AP data, here's a quick review on how AP courses and exams are structured. AP courses follow a similar syllabus to that of a corresponding college course. AP teachers must have a bachelor's degree in the subject area corresponding to the AP course they are assigned to. And they also need to continue to be updated in College Board AP Summer Institutes as well. AP exams, as you know, are administered once a year in the month of May. The exams consist of a multiple choice section as well as one or two free response areas. And these exams are criterion-based, okay? And they're ranked, as you know, on a scale of one to five, with five being the highest rank and receiving the most credit in universities. This slide is a list of thirty AP courses that we offer in CFB across our different campuses. And that is of the thirty-nine that College Board, excuse me, that College Board authors. Just a little note on that, College Board is continuing to create new courses for us. The newest one that's being piloted next year is AP Cybersecurity. And we're looking at the opportunities that they're creating by trying to take kind of a side-by-side of what courses are going to potentially support CTE programming as those are becoming more and more important to us as well. So many, many of those courses are meant to complement the technical aspect of the CTE course so that we can see and maintain rigor in courses. Even for students that may or may not choose to go to college, they're still going to be involved in rigorous courses and courses that are going to support their post-secondary lifestyle. So now we have the numbers. Having discussed the structure of the program, we are going to take a look at how students are performing in AP coursework over the past five, sorry, over the past three years. This chart indicates how many unique students earned a three or higher in their courses. The yellow column indicates the number of students enrolled in at least one AP course per campus. The green column indicates the total number of AP courses at a campus by all students. And the purple column indicates the number of unique students who achieved a score of three or higher in any AP class on that campus. So we can see that we have a strong fifty-one percent of our students that are earning three and higher scores over the past three years. So we're excited about that. Some promising things to point out is post-COVID, we were rebuilding AP just like everybody else was. And we can see the continued growth that CFB is seeing, not only in the numbers of students taking AP courses, but the number of students taking more than one AP course at a time. If you want to do a deeper dive, I know there was some requests for some additional information. And so we built into each one of the campuses on the left-hand side. You can click on each one of those links and you can see a two-year analysis of course availability, student enrollment data, as well as the proportion of students that are achieving three or higher on those scores. And also, if you look at the three, four, and five AP score counts by campus down at the bottom, you can do a little bit of a data dive into a spreadsheet that details the distributions of three, fours, and fives by campus, by course. And you can kind of look through those to see how the programs are faring. All right, then I wanted to take a look real quickly at the twenty-three and twenty-four mean score. So as we're looking at this, it's important to remember that AP score setting is based on research completed annually. That means that this research sets every year cut scores that determine how AP students are going to translate into a score of a one through five on their rankings. So AP score distribution, as most of you know, or may not know, it follows a bell curve. So most of your scores, just like with any bell curve, are going to fall in the mid-range. This last year, the twenty and twenty-four AP nationwide mean score for all College Board tests was 2.96. So if you'll keep that kind of in mind and keep the bell curve in mind when you're looking through some of these, you'll see why we're excited about celebrating how some of our programs and teachers and students are doing in these. In this chart, you can see, again, that the numbers that are highlighted in yellow are going to indicate any campus or any program on a campus that is above the state mean. The green highlighted areas are any that have surpassed state and also have surpassed the national mean. So that's, I mean, we have a lot of yellows and we have a lot of greens up there. That's, that's a great thing to celebrate for us. Just, you know, for example, AP Human Geography, ninth grade class, that's your first AP course unless you've taken AP Spanish in middle school. And we have excellent scores. We've got three campuses that are at or above the state mean and two above the national mean. And that's for our freshmen. That's their first step into AP or rigorous coursework, whether it's, you know, they chose AP, but it could have been Dual Credit, or it could have been UT Onramps as well. But it's the opportunity to have that experience. And on this page, you know, just a couple more, just again emphasizing all the yellows and greens that you see. Courses like, one thing that we're really proud of is building the Computer Science Principles Program. That is an introductory course. It's a fantastic course for first-time AP students that are looking to kind of get their feet wet in AP. It's a portfolio-based course, so it's not a one and done. It's very much like our studio courses where they have portfolios of work. They're working on projects. They don't have to know coding. They're using coding in order to create systems to do a project. And so it's a really excellent opportunity for our students to be able to get in there and feel supported and feel like they can do this in, under the toolage of our awesome CFB teachers. So before jumping to our Dual Credit, because I do want to give Dr. Shackman time to talk, I just want to shout out real quickly my AP guru, Michelle Wilson. She's our Secondary GT Specialist, and she pulls data day and night. She loves it. She's, we have lots of talks and gets really excited about all the amazing things she can do with AP. And it's because of your support. And it's because we have teachers who want this for our kids and give these opportunities for our kids. So now I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Shackman and let her talk to you about UT Onramps and Dual Credit and the opportunities that those provide for our students.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Bruce Shackman. I'm the Dual Credit Coordinator. This year, I have the opportunity to oversee the Onramps program and Dual Credit. A little about me, I taught at Vivian Field for a number of years and was blessed to teach at Creekview High School. Go Mustangs! And while I was at Creekview High School, I got to teach an Onramps rhetoric class. It was so valuable to me to bring this program to our students. And I want to share with you what it offers students and what I saw happen in class. Onramps is a college program designed for high school students. It is run through the University of Texas system. And it benefits students by preparing them for college, helping them on college admissions, and early exposure to college culture. Onramps classes are unique. There is a University of Texas faculty member that teaches the class. We have a highly trained CFB We have a highly-trained CFB teacher who facilitates the class in our classrooms on our campuses. The high school faculty member is trained, they have summer program, they have ongoing professional learning institutes during the year, and they're able to coordinate with university faculty. This is important because teachers who are facilitating the program produce with their students the grades that go on the high school transcript. The facilitation, the teaching, and the students' production grants the high school grade. Students compose projects, tests, labs, and papers, and send those to the university faculty member for a grade, and the grade comes back as a college grade that goes on the college transcript. They are not the same, and they don't overlap. The potential benefit for that is that college credit can be earned. The consideration is that not every student wants to accept the college credit. And let me give you an example. There was a student in my class who was bent on doing math. Any math, the higher the math, the better. He got a C in the rhetoric class that I taught. He was the happiest person alive. He will never have to go into a freshman English class because he's earned his credit. Same classroom, a young lady wanted to go after an English degree. She also earned a C, and she knows that starting your college transcript with a C in your major does not help you. She declined the credit. We want to support all students, and their attempts on ramps does not have prerequisites. If a student wants to take the class, they're allowed to take the class. And you can see on the board the total enrollments by campus, the number of students that were eligible to accept credit, and the number of students who did accept credit. There was, I don't know, an alignment that happened between twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. And instead of offering more classes than we could support with the faculty and the mission of our campuses, we've pared it down to three highly-functional Onramps programs. We have Earth, Wind, and Fire, which is the geoscience. We have Physics One, very challenging and taught incredibly well by our well-trained teachers. And we have US History. Students often, and you can see by the numbers, students often will take more than one Onramps class, or they'll take an Onramps class one year and another one the next. We like to see that because it means they're getting their feet wet, they're getting exposed, and they're trying very rigorous coursework. Dual credit is close to my heart. Our children attended for Caveon College, and both of our boys didn't start college until after high school graduation. Dual credit is our partnership with Dallas College, and dual credit allows CFB students to get college credit while they're still in high school with the support of their counselors, their teachers, their parents, and their community. There is tremendous cost savings with dual credit. Any hour that a student spends in that college class is an hour they don't have to pay tuition for after high school. There are prerequisites for dual credit. We have a few intro-level courses, but if it's a core class, you have to demonstrate college readiness. And that would be with an SAT, ACT, or TSIA Two score that meets the minimums set by the Accreditation Board and the great state of Texas. The structure of dual credit, it is a college class. They either go to the class, they have students who do class online, or we have credentialed teachers or facilitating teachers on our high school campuses. To become a credentialed instructor, a CFB teacher has to have eighteen hours of master's work in that content or a master's in the content. College-level teaching methods, lectures, discussion, and group work. I will tell you, there are no late assignments turned in in dual credit, and there are no reviews. You turn it in when it's due. The college grading system applies here. The grade you get is the grade you get. And that same grade will go on your high school transcript and your college transcript. We have an incredibly supportive group of people, counselors, teachers, mentors, who help students. If they flub dual credit, we are right there for them. We're making sure that they have help and support to make better decisions before they leave us. And we've had great success with that. Dual credit is transferable, and these are the college courses. They are perfectly aligned and under review of the Southern Colleges accreditations. That link will show you the two-hundred dual-credit courses available in CFB. This is what I'm most proud of. We were able to add new courses this year and expand our courses across the board and deepen the relationship that dual credit has with CTE. And you'll hear from Leanne Stone in a little bit about all the programs of study that we offer. And dual credit stands by, ready to add to the rigor of those programs. This chart, I have to give a shout-out to Katie Bondy's. She, before I took this role, she managed the data. And it's a beast. So, if you'll take the time and click on the link at the top of the columns, it will demonstrate for you every campus, every class, the number of students that took the class, and all of those that took credit, had credit. You can see across the board that we have strong program. We would love to make a stronger program. I'm currently working with campuses to help them build in the master schedule more dual-credit classes, find and get credentialed our wonderful CFB teachers who have master's degrees in their content and would be willing to take on the class. Total unique students over three years is twelve-hundred. There's another five-hundred who have taken multiple dual-credit classes. And then, total college hours for these three years is over sixteen-thousand. And I couldn't be more proud. I want more, but I couldn't be more proud. Things that tie together AP, Onramps, and dual credit, high achievement, high rigor. Students who take these have the opportunity for higher test scores. They demonstrate themselves to be college and career-ready, and they are engaged. We've got students, y'all during the summer, people will text me, "Hey, Dr. Shakman, I've got to have that government class, can't live if I don't take it." And we'll work with them and make it happen. But dual credit is fickle because it takes eighteen to twenty-four months to prepare the courses, the rosters, and the teacher assignments. So, we really appreciate the campuses being a part of the success of this program. Ways that they are different, AP is monitored by College Board. Onramps and dual credit are monitored by the accreditation of the Southern Colleges and their accreditation standards. AP has a standardized exam that assesses college-level mastery. And Onramps and dual credit are more varied and do not have a standardized exam. We are very proud of the professional development, the student support, student enrichment, and program management. We want to extend the number of opportunities CFB students have. We would like to look forward to AP contracts. We certainly have dual-credit families sign a contract when they get into the program because it is so rigorous. And we are working to credential more teachers on our high school campuses.
All right, so that was a lot of information for three different amazing programs that we have. And I get to do my favorite part, which is less about numbers because I'm, you know, I can do numbers all day long behind the door. But what I really love to do is just celebrate the wonderful things that are happening with our kiddos. And, you know, it's important to note that AP, UT, Onramps, and dual-credit courses, I mean, every single one of them is a valuable experience for some reason, for some child. Navigating how and who and where that is best for is definitely something that parents and students have to consider when they're picking those courses every year, and making sure that we have the tools and that we have the information out there in order to facilitate conversations to make sure that students know which courses might be the best fit for them based on what their personal goals are, what their collegiate goals are, what their financial situation is, what their passion is in certain things. All have to be taken in consideration, and that's hard when that means a name-and-need conversation with every single student every single time they want to work on their course scheduling. And that's a lot, but we have a lot of dedicated people who understand those programs and understand the different offerings and what they can do for our kiddos. So, just making sure that y'all know that we're trying to stay on top of everything with all three of these programs to be able to make sure that we educate our parents and our students to do what's best for them, to get them where they want to be. And I always like to end on a quote, and I feel like this quote definitely ties into what CFB is all about. "High achievement takes place in the framework of high expectations." These three programs are opportunities to give our students high expectations. And I just want to end on a little personal conversation. Most of you know that I was an art teacher for seventeen years before I moved into this department. Most of you know I've been here since kindergarten, so I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, but apparently. But I taught AP Art History for eight years. And AP Art History is an extremely difficult class because while I was teaching it, there was no list of artworks that were to be covered. So, from the dawn of creation till today, those artworks and everything about them could appear on the test that a student takes in May. And as a teacher, how to prepare that information for a student, and for a student to be able to take in that information was very daunting. And I will not say that I did it well, looking back. There were a lot of PLCs that would have supported me if I had been a part of them. However, just to make the comment that I had a lot of students that made ones and twos. And, you know, we had to have a lot of hard conversations. But not too long ago, I spoke to one of my students, Prinsey, and she had gone, she had gotten accepted into University of Houston for pre-med. And they were asking her, because she had only made a two on the AP Art History test, to retake a survey course. And if any of you have taken Art History Survey One and Two, it's a very difficult course. It's not art history, it's not for the faint of heart. It's a lot of slides in my day anyway, slide memorizations and essays. She took this course, and we had a lot of conversations. And basically, what she summarized for me was that although she was upset about having to retake the course because she didn't get credit, when she got into that class, the realization of how far ahead she was that her peers in that class was, just kept sticking in her mind. They were so overwhelmed by the essays and by the readings. She not only had a little bit of a foundation, but she also had the ability to understand what it took to be successful. And I think that's just, you know, that's a credit to our teachers, that's a credit to our programs that you guys support as far as giving them that opportunity. College credit is great, I am all about that. But to me, my first heart and my first goal is not letting them be surprised when they walk in that class their first day of college. Can they sit in that class and feel like they belong there? And can they have the confidence to know that that seat is made for them? And so, you know, she made a B in the course, so she was very happy about that. But I just wanted to wind things down today by saying, you know, and a reminder that it's not just the financial aspect of these programs that can save a family, it's really building the program, and we have amazing teachers. We have amazing programs in our departments and in our, across our district. And we just really appreciate you continuing to support them to do what's best for our kids. And I'll end there.
Thank you both, we appreciate getting to know more about this. Board members, are there any questions for Ms. Carol?
Thank you, that is so encouraging, and I just love the fact that it increases a child or a student's maturity to want to excel and be more than just a teenager. So, that's very, very nice. But I was thinking about our eco-disadvantaged kids and, of course, Spanish. How are they, are they able to receive the same kind of opportunity for these courses?
As far as I know, the modifications that support any other class also support these three programs. So, they, you know, have every opportunity. You know, one of the things that I like to talk to the AP teachers about, you know, when there's this transition of what AP students used to look like and what AP students look like now, because just like with UT Onramps, those courses are made for everybody. But what that means is those teachers have to learn how to scaffold for everybody because they have a different-looking student in there than maybe what they had ten years ago. And so, I think that that is absolutely a valid question as far as are we working on literacy strategies? Are we working on supports for our ESL? Even for our teachers that are teaching those high-level courses, because those courses are available to everybody.
That's awesome. And I wanted to also ask about our newcomers. Now, I know we, you know, that's a challenge, but is that, do you find any that have excelled and are able to take AP courses? Or where are we, or do we have any involved in?
Absolutely. I will tell you that it's very tricky at high school. You know, just as if you're looking to see if someone needs GT services and they're emergent bilingual or they're a newcomer. At high school, when you determine that a student's going to go into AP, you have to consider what that student can handle. And while if their, you know, previous, if their home language is Vietnamese, the instruction's going to happen in English. So, there has to be hard conversations with that parent and that student to say, "Okay, at what point is your language acquisition going to catch up so that you can balance what you're going to be able to be asked to do?" AP Human Geography has a ton of reading in it. You know, so we want to make sure that we're always setting our students up for the best scenario and to be successful, and sometimes that just means not yet. It means, you know, let's acquire a little bit more language and then let's put you in there. It's not negating what they know, it's just giving them the best possible results for where they're at.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, ladies, that was a great presentation. Appreciate all of the, I love the chart, that helps a lot. We've been fortunate enough to kind of live through the AP exam world. My senior graduated in May, and now my daughter, Creekview. And it's been great for us, we are going to transfer, he's basically a sophomore when he went to college, which is nice for those of us who are writing the checks to pay for that. So, thank you very much. My question actually is about the dual credit, which we did not take advantage of. But I did notice on here that on the GPA for both AP and UT Onramps, it's a plus-nine on the GPA, which is a huge benefit, especially if you're in the realm of the top ten percent for the kids. So, is there a reason that dual credit does not receive that same benefit?
That's been a long conversation for, I know, at least the last three years. A lot of people have come together to discuss, and to be honest, I would be remiss if I said I understood every single detail of why the discussion to keep it with no GPA points is. It has to do with how we work in teams as far as pass/fail courses. But it is continually under discussion. I know we are, we've talked about it even this year. So, we're working on it. The difference is, is it's going to, it takes a committee that deals with our CCMR people, our dual-credit people, our teams and teams people as far as how we code those courses, as far as what happens if a student fails and they're not, they're not taking it through our system, but they're taking it outside on their own. So, it's such a complex system that we understand and do know that it needs to be at the top of our forefront for conversations. We just haven't found the perfect solution just yet.
Okay, well, and I didn't know if it was a state regulation, or does other districts do it? I just wanted to know why we weren't awarding those kids the GPA credit because it's quite the undertaking for dual credit, UT Onramps or AP, it's all of it, is it undertaking?
Ms. Holcomb had asked me to do the research, and I have started that process. But as Stacy said, it's going to take multiple committees to pull it off. There are at least six components to building points for GPA, and it can be daunting. And we've done research into districts near us and districts like us. And we would love to share more information at a time that we could all sit down together.
Great, I'd love that, thank you. Great. I'd love that. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much. I have a question about all this, you know, all the different options. What is the communication that's done with families about these different options with high schoolers? Is there communication meetings, that kind of thing with incoming high schoolers or kids in high school to learn, so their families can also learn?
We start crunch, okay. We start parent meetings in February because that is right in line with students sitting down with their counselors one-on-one and making course decisions. Last year, I got the opportunity to go to middle schools and help their students, especially students that were looking to go to ECHS, get through the Dallas application and enrollment. And that is a daunting thing, just the application is forty-five minutes. And so the middle school campuses have invited me back this year to start talking to students in their eighth grade year. We know that when CTE gets started with their introduction programs, that it includes those dual credit opportunities. So, middle school, they'll see us on campus. For high school, we'll do parent nights. I'll do one parent night for every campus and then webinars that go with. I have a webinar that gets published every year and can be sent out. Everybody gets that lovely chart that you have. And the time that we have with counselors to sit down and express to them exactly what goes into each component is very critical because the counselors and the students are the ones that are making the decisions about where students put their time.
Thank you so much. That's pretty much it. I would, I would just like to add that a lot of it does go to our counselors, is making sure that we're working with Melanie, with school counseling, and that we have good communication with them so that as they're meeting with those students and those parents, because they come across them in, in greater masses, that they have the right education and that we're feeding and keeping up with all the extra in order to make it an easy conversation for them. I think that this chart is a movement in the right direction. We've been working on that for about two years. Melanie and I started it about three years ago, and it's just continually evolved. But I think we're at a good place with it in order to have conversations that are not too educational for parents to be able to look at something and say, okay, I can see why that might be a better fit for my kiddo or, or maybe AP versus dual credit and so forth.
First, Ms. Brady, I want to go back to your point, the points for GPA. The GPA calculation and grading is actually defined by local board policy. And this topic is already on the subcommittee's list.
Large list.
And has been. It is a long list. Thank y'all for the presentation and the information. I, I agree that these three opportunities that we offer our students are valuable experience in a wide, a wide variety of ways. You know, first and foremost, preparing students for college or reality. I've lived through it with my own. And it is a good opportunity that I've always been proud of for CFB and, you know, what your teams put together to offer our students. On the AP, you know, yes, the numbers and the participation are going up and the, and the testing. And, you know, fifty-one percent on getting the three above is great news. I mean, that's super positive. But for students that have put in this effort and throughout the year, that means that forty-nine percent are not realizing one of the valuable benefits from AP, and that being course, college credit. And your example of a two with UTA, I think you, you said it was. I, I don't know if that's standard across all Texas universities or how often that happens. But still, forty-nine percent is a struggle for me where we're not, where those students aren't getting that opportunity. And I just want to, you know, I, I value this table, this chart, and any communication efforts that are made with parents and students about the inherent risk of that direction, which is a positive direction because it's nationally recognized and it's a great program. But there are inherent risks, and until we figure out as a group how to get that other forty-nine percent on the other side, I mean, that's just going to continue, that's just not acceptable to me, you know, for our students. And so whatever communication can be continued and provided and, and understanding, especially for parents who y'all know are in the throes of all kinds of information of going into high school and then, you know, later on in college, parents, just to clarify those kind of things, that's a priority for me. And, you know, I think we as a board at some point need to have a discussion, you know, how to make sure that we are getting those forty-nine percent. What do we need to set in place for the district to get that other forty-nine percent to the other side for the benefit? So, thanks for your efforts though.
Ms. Hatfield?
Thank you for the presentation. This is, I'm living in elementary and middle school land still. So the last experience I had in dual credit was my own, and so it's been a while. So I really appreciate the chart. Super helpful. Learned a lot from the chart and the presentation. And I am super thankful for what we're offering to students. And I think you bring a really valid point that what we're offering provides students the opportunity of the experience in being able to prepare to be college ready, even if they don't get the credit. I also am wondering about what the plans are to continue to improve. Because I think tonight, we're looking at data, as Ms. Herbachek said, data that also shows that we have some growth opportunities. And I looked over the DIP before I came tonight. I did not see anything about any of these three options in the DIP. I could have very well missed it, but I did a search, and I did not see anything. And so I would just ask that as we're continuing to move forward, that we even as a board consider our advanced learners and the students that are capable of this type of work also need a focus in our district. And so that was just something that I would ask that we consider, is how are we supporting the students and the parents of children that are capable or potentially capable, and maybe we're not catching those students? So I would also ask that we look at some demographic data on this. And are our demographics matching the student opportunities that we have for these students? And are, are, are our students representative that are taking this? Because I think that there's some real opportunities here to make sure that we are capturing all kids because that is our motto, high expectations for all. And I really think there's a potential here for even more great success as we move forward. So, thank you.
And I did want to mention on here, and it's just kind of a wrap back around because we were going through it so quickly, that there are some things that we do, that we do feel like there is value to put back in for AP specifically. One of the things that we used to do were AP contracts, and that was just kind of a commitment for a student to not do October flight where they want out. You know, we've gotten pretty good in our district about not offering schedule changes late in the semester. But even just a commitment to take the test. One of the things with AP is our district doesn't pay for AP testing. Therefore, we cannot hold it against a student for not taking a test. So when we're looking at scores, we're only looking at scores of people who actually took the test. We're not looking at scores for people who chose not to take the test for any reason. So there are just little things like, you know, the, the resumption of those AP contracts and looking at AP prep camps, maybe in the summer before for first time AP students, something that will build that confidence so that they know they can go and have that, have that first experience be a positive experience. And then we used to have a MZ grant through Turner. And during that time, we had AP leadership teams on each one of the campuses and the communication and the expectation for some of those campuses, I think, was a lot stronger because we had that, we had the administration working with the leadership on the campus, working with the teachers. So I absolutely agree with you in all three areas. We have plenty of room that we can grow, and we absolutely look forward to having more conversations with you about how to do that.
Anyone else? The only question that I would add is, at what level is there competition between the three courses?
This is one of my favorite questions. I really appreciate you asking.
We didn't set that up.
When I started in the dual credit coordinator role, one of the things that I tackled first was a quick look at the demographics of the dual credit student. And what I was most pleased to find was dual credit was pilfering thirty percent of the gifted kids. And they had done their AP courses. They saw a benefit for dual credit, and they started dual credit. And I loved that. We also pilfered from the Onramps program. There are a bunch of students who during their sophomore and junior year will take Onramps classes. And when they get to senior year or the summer between their junior and senior year, they want those dual credit courses because they see them as advantageous. I could not be more proud of the kids who tackle dual credit. If they come to a place that they're not sure they'll finish, they reach out for help. If they don't reach out for help, we go find them and give them help whether they like it or not. But it is a relationship between all of us together, and we're supported by CCMR and CTE. And I couldn't be more grateful for the other people that I work with who come along and help me get students tested for TSIA Two or LeAnn's program that I can't wait to hear about. When her students come to the higher end of their programs of study, they'll take dual credit classes. We are all interrelated and we all support each other. We have the advantage of fantastic school faculties, administrators and counseling systems.
Thank you.
Just a little side note on that as well, is that we are always looking at data as far as how our students are being successful in certain AP classes. That's the reason why we have the three courses that we have in UT Onramps, because it is either an opportunity that they could not get through dual credit or through an AP course, or it's because those programs showed a higher level of success for one or the other. So we're always doing that as well as, you know, we, we have to meet the masses. What they want, we try to give them. But we do recognize that with staffing and with scheduling complexities, master scheduling and things like that, that there's always going to be hard conversations about what we offer. And that going forward is, is definitely something that needs to be considered as well.
Yes.
Thinking about the fees to take that test, at the Educational Foundation, you know, we would be delighted to help those children with that. So you might think about the percentage or the amount of money that you need and reach out to Ms. Mall.
Each one of the high school campuses actually does already do that. They do get a grant to help supplement, and our district does have a partial budget. So the AP does have a supplemented fee for them in order to support them. But it's just not full, just, again, just for what we have. And for the, for the number of students that actually want to participate in it too, so, but yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Carol and Dr. Shakman. Board, do we want or need to take a five-minute break before we go to our next agenda item?
I say plow through.
Plow through, okay. A CTE update. Turn it over to LeAnn Stone.
Good evening, President Shakman, esteemed board and Deputy Superintendent Marsh. I'm excited to present to you tonight about CTE and give you an update on our programs of study and all the great things we have going on in our district right now. First, I'm going to start with a little, did you know? Did you know that we have six thousand four hundred and seventeen students enrolled in a CTE course? And that is four thousand nine hundred and thirty-one unique students. Last year, last school year, in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we earned, our students earned two thousand three hundred and three industry-based certifications. That's up from the previous year of eleven hundred. So we're pretty proud of more than doubling that. We have thirteen TEA-recognized career clusters out of the fourteen total. The only one we do not have is energy at this time. We have thirty-eight TEA programs of study. We just completed last week, eighth grade students visiting all four high schools to see our CTE program so they can see all of the amazing facilities that our bonds have helped provide. And we're very grateful for the support that we get from the board and from those bond packages to help our facilities be second to none, honestly, in the district. We go to lots of other districts to see what they have, and I would put ours up against anybody. We're very excited about our Carrollton Fire Rescue Partnership with our Fire Academy at Creekview. They have already donated a fire truck, lots of equipment. They're planning on donating a gurney, which I had no idea how much those cost. But in our last meeting, I heard it was upwards of twenty thousand dollars, and they're going to donate one to us so that we can have one, so that our students can practice when we get that built, that area, you know, regarding our programs at each campus. So I don't want to go and read all of the specifics here. But we have the number of students enrolled at Creekview High School in a CTE program of study. And then we have the FTEs tied to those. So at Creekview High School, we have nine hundred and fifty-five unique students. You can obviously see that does not correlate with the number of students enrolled because that means that we have students that are double dipping or even triple dipping because they are trying to, trying out various programs of study. So to the, well, I guess a couple of things I want to highlight about Creekview. Obviously, their, their top enrolled program is human services. We have five point eight FTEs associated with that. Law and public service is obviously also thriving with three hundred and thirty-nine students, and we have three point one FTEs tied to that. Our Fire Academy is only in its second year, and we have seventy-two students enrolled in that with the one instructor. Automotive, that number might look deceptive, but that's meaning it's not as high as law and public service and, and human services, but we're max capacity. That, that garage at Creekview can't hold any more students, and the classrooms can't either. So we're, we're maxed out with those two staff members there. And then, of course, we have cybersecurity, which is offered at all four campuses with just the one teacher. Yearbook also has the one teacher. And then education and training, which is something all near and dear to us, is we just have the one teacher in that program study with sixty-four students. At Ranchview High School, I did want to mention that the MEATSA program, the engineering program is not listed here. It's obviously on Turner, but we do understand there will be that shift next year. But for the ITA, we have three hundred and sixty students enrolled. We have for hospitality and tourism, three hundred and forty, and that includes culinary. And then we have our Ag Food and Natural Resources, which is more focused on plant science at Ranchview. We have a hundred and thirty-four students. And then our anatomy and dollars and cents classes there with only a half a unit tied to that. And so unique students at Ranchview High School that are enrolled in CTE is six hundred and sixty-seven. And we have another program to join that here soon next year. Newman Smith, we have unique students of one thousand five hundred and three. They have their architecture and construction program, which is quite large, with seven hundred and seventy-two students. Business, marketing and finance is our district's largest program of study, and it has one thousand and thirty-eight students. And then, as you can see, they, they have manufacturing with three hundred and eighty-eight students with their, the three and, I guess, three-fifths or four-fifths FTEs attached. And then we have yearbook and then anatomy, which are not tied to a program of study. And then finally, RL Turner, lots of programs to list here with seventeen, a hundred and six students that are unique, that are enrolled in CTE programs there. We have our AMAT, which is our Arts AV. We have our Health Science, our Engineering, the three twenty. Keep in mind, I think the number was, I'm pretty good with remembering, but maybe ninety-four seniors. And so the, the rest of those students would be shifting to Ranchview or making a decision to stay at Turner and pick something different. Transportation, we do have three teachers in the auto program there, and so we are allowed to have more students with that at two hundred and seventy-five. Both auto programs at both campuses are full and cannot take more students right now. Cosmetology also full with a hundred and seventy-six students and the three- Cosmetology also full with a hundred and seventy-six students and the three teachers. But that's due to state cosmetology licensing requirements and number of students allowed in the salon. And then we have our Vet Med welding and then anatomy and colors and scents, forensics, and all of that going on at Turner as well to round that out. So finally, just doing an overview. All of our campus CTE programs are in the black. If you just look at the funding, so I know that Ms. Settle spoke a lot about the funding and the importance of those things. And our CTE funding allotment has gone up from the pre-alignment before we realigned in 2021. We were receiving, you can look up the summary of finances, and you can see that our district was receiving CTE allotments around seven point five million. Since our team realigned that in 2021, the funding has jumped over ten million dollars per year. And that's verifiable on the summary of finances. And so each program has been broken down where I've looked at the data with regards to staffing, supply expenses and such, as well as the funding that they are providing based on a formula that has been provided by the CTAC organization where I can compute based on student enrollment and attendance, how much those classes are getting us funding allotment-wise. And we are operating quite well in the CTE department on that. And here's the good news. The good news is that with that additional CTE allotment that we earn, fifty-five percent has to be spent on CTE, which helps us reinvest in our programs and keep them running without being an additional strain on the district budget. So the more funding we generate, the more we get to spend on utilizing industry-standard equipment and supplies for our students so that they can get those industry-based credentials and continue to achieve at high levels and be career-ready for that next step. Lastly, I do want to highlight the IBC outcomes again. So we talked about the increase in IBCs from eleven hundred roughly to last year, two thousand three hundred and three. Not only do those IBC outcomes benefit our students because they have a credential that they can take with them to whatever job site they go to, even if they're not picking a job in that particular program of study, showing that they have the wherewithal to take that certification, follow through, and they have some knowledge is going to carry some weight with the employers. But secondarily, we get reimbursed by the state for those certifications. And last year, there was a significant increase because of this, oops, sorry. Because of the significant increase in the number of certifications we gave, we got sixty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars back for those certification exams that we're spending money for. So I would say that it was a decent investment on our part for our students and their success. And I think that's it unless y'all have any questions.
Questions, Benavides?
That's wonderful. I was thinking about at what time do the students get to enroll, ninth grade?
Yes. So we used to, when I first started here. About four years ago, we did offer some principals' classes in eighth grade at the middle school level. But the feedback we got, and that was also right off COVID, was that the students were not showing up as prepared for that second-level class as freshmen. They weren't quite as ready for that jump. And so they wanted the students to just start taking the principles at the high school campus so that it was better aligned with what they were wanting to do. So yes, ninth grade is the earliest.
And like the other three programs that we spoke of early, what's the recruitment process? Are y'all just encouraging everybody to come?
Yes. So the recruitment process for the eighth graders for CTE is pretty involved. But we have a CCE course, College Career Exploration, for eighth graders. Not everyone is taking it, but a lot of our students right now, especially at Field and Bush Middle School, are, they have the highest percentage of eighth graders taking that class. But that class lets them know about all of the opportunities available to them, whether it's a CTE program of study, and they cover all of our programs of study in the district. But then they also talk to them about dual credit opportunities, early college high school, all of the things that are coming to them as they approach their high school years because we want them prepared for that PGP process in the spring so that it's a seamless process. So that's how we're trying to work with counseling to make sure that we can have the kids aware. Those eighth-grade visits I mentioned, those were important because the students from the west side of the district may not even be aware of what's going on in the welding department at RL Turner until they've actually physically seen it. And we brought them there and we let them see it. And I think that it will be interesting to see how the numbers change this year with regards to transfers because they've actually seen it with their own eyes. They drove it in a bus and realized it wasn't as far from where, as what they thought. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that looks different this year.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for the update and the information. Just like our other three opportunities, I mean, I think this list of programs and CTE courses just offer a wealth of opportunities. You never know when a student is going to find their passion in one of these courses and determine their path or find out what they don't like, right? It could go either way. But I'm proud of the opportunities that we offer. The enrollment and the number of students and the FTEs is all valuable information. Mr. Marsh, I just, I want to focus again that, you know, are these the right opportunities to offer for our students? What happens, you know, after? Are our students using these certifications to go immediately into the workforce because that's their desired path? Are they using something to, you know, to find their path in college? I mean, are we, are we using them to prepare our students? What happens? I mean, these are successful numbers, I think, because of enrollment and that we have people participate in, that we offer them. But what happens?
I realize, can I answer that a little bit? I mean, since it's aimed a little, I feel like I can answer it. I feel like the secondary, when people graduate from college, it's really tough to track where they're going. Specifically, because they can go get a business degree and pursue something completely different and go to med school and end up becoming a doctor. So while it is, and we are tracking that, we are, we're starting tracking that because we know that that's important to the board and we want to make sure that we are tracking the best we can. Once the students leave our walls, it's very difficult to track that down. But I feel like the opportunities we're providing these students, while they're students of CFP, is the best that we can offer to anyone. Like I said, our facilities are second to none. Our IBC certifications numbers and percentages of enrollment in our district, I'd put against anybody. Because I feel like we are performing very well and we are offering these opportunities. Whether or not that's what they choose to do, we're giving them skills so that they can be successful, no matter what it is that they're choosing to do. And so I think that while we can, I mean, we're offering all the ones that the state wants except energy. Energy is the one program, or the one career cluster that we don't offer. But I think that we have to be careful at limiting the opportunities so that our students haven't had the chance to pursue whatever that is. And then whatever it looks like down the road for them, we need to be able to say that we did our best and provided all opportunities possible. And so that's why I'm passionate about making sure that we don't, you know, look to cut a program that just because we don't necessarily have data right now about what that looks like five years from now.
I did not mention cutting a program or limiting. I want to be clear, that's not mine. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our students and that we're living our goal of preparing our students for the world. So, I mean, if I remember, there was somebody, we were doing a review of, you know, what was happening, right?
That is correct. And you brought that up before. That is being worked on, as Ms. Stone said, she is working on that and looking at other districts and seeing how they're able to track that. So that is in the process, and you will be getting information on that soon as that's complete.
Thank you.
May I share that an alumni gathering is what Ms. Gillen did a couple of years ago for our Biomed? And it was very, very popular. A lot of data, a lot of people came through, the children, successes, doctors, nurses. And that was a great way to be able to reunite classes. I don't remember how many years came, but it was, it was very successful.
Yes, I appreciate that. And I was in attendance for that event. And I honestly can't go somewhere in the community without someone stopping me and telling me about. I was at a facility about automobiles, trying to get students internships. And someone stopped me and told me how their sister went to the cosmetology program at RL Turner and how they're still doing, they're still, they own their own salon, they're telling me all this. So we're doing great things for our students. It's just, I mean, the stories are out there in the community for sure.
Stone, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items. And the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on our consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items that we wish to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to deal with the consent agenda.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion from Ms. Brady. Ms. Benavides has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented. That's unanimous. Ms. Canada, you see that? Our next item on the agenda is item six, items for discussion or action. Six A deals with the consent agenda. There were no items removed, so we'll skip directly to six B. Consider the approval of the RFQ for a two-step process for Farmers Branch Elementary School replacement. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman, trustees, Mr. Marsh. Tonight, we have items six B and six C. They are on the same slide there. It is the two-step process for elementary school replacement. Six B is Farmers Branch Elementary. This is part, of course, of the 2023 bond. We tonight are at step two of the CMAR process. We chose the delivery method on October 3rd. And then tonight is the selection of the construction firm. It was a two-stage RFQ process. Round one scoring took place on September 19th. Six of the seven advanced from round one. Round two scoring took place on October 10th. And we selected one of the construction firms for negotiation on each project. We did interview and rank at the same time for both of the projects, Farmers Branch and Carrollton Elementary. That is, that's the summary of both six B and six C. I can speak to six C as well, or we can hold, whichever you prefer.
Board members, are you comfortable with putting the two items together? Yes, okay.
Okay. Six C is, of course, for Carrollton Elementary. It is, it's the same, we're step two for it. Tonight, selection of the construction firm, same dates. CMAR was chosen on October 3rd of '24. The construction firm selection is tonight. And then round one scoring took place for the Carrollton Elementary replacement on September 19th as well. Six of those seven advanced to the review after they were ranked. And then round two scoring took place on the same day, October 10th. One was selected for negotiation on this project as well. Again, we interviewed and ranked at the same time. And you, we are recommending two construction firms, one for each. They're in your agenda packet. That will hopefully mitigate the supply chain risk and diversify suppliers, avoid overreliance, et cetera. And we believe also utilizing the same architect for both elementaries saved us about half a million dollars. So with that, I will field your questions.
Any questions? Board members, I'll accept a motion, and the motion should include both two-step processes, B and C. Go ahead. You're voting already, all right. So the motion should include both B and C. Yes.
I move that we approve six B, the two-step process for Farmers Branch Elementary School Replacement RFQ, and six C, the RFQ for the two-step process for Carrollton Elementary School Replacement as presented.
I have a motion, board, I have a second from Ms. Brady. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor of the motion as presented? Ms. Canada, that's seven yes and zero opposed. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next item on our agenda is closed meeting, as authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071. Consultation with Attorney, 072. Real Property, 074. Personnel Matters, 076. Security Devices, 082. I expect you all to memorize this. Personal Investigative Complaint, 0821. Student Information, 084. This next item will be a closed meeting where we're going to discuss real estate on behalf of the district. And the board members, we've been looking at that and the possibility of making a transfer with City of Farmers Branch. So I will, going to go ahead and recess to close. Jenna, the board will go to the conference room. You all are welcome to stay and call Dolan's Pizza if you'd like.
Call the time.
Call the time.
Okay. We are back in open session after the closed session discussion on item 8A. Board, is there an action that we want to take on this? Ms. Rebaczek?
I move the board, I move the board approves the following resolution regarding the exchange of real property. Whereas pursuant to Texas Education Code, Section 11.151, the Board of Trustees of Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, the district is authorized to acquire and hold real and personal property. Whereas pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 272.001, the Board of Trustees is authorized to exchange real property owned by the district for real property owned by another governmental entity that has the power of eminent domain. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the district is currently acquiring real property for the construction of facilities to meet the educational needs of the students residing in the, in the district. Whereas the real property consisting of 3.345 acres, more or less, more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too, and incorporated herein for all purposes, the city property, is necessary for the construction of facilities to meet the educational needs of the students residing in the district. Whereas the district's Board of Trustees has determined that it would be in the best interest of the district to enter into a real estate exchange contract with the City of Farmers Branch to acquire the city property in exchange for certain district real property consisting of 3.386 acres, more or less, more particularly described in Exhibit B, the CFB ISD property. And for other consideration to be more particularly described in the exchange contract, including an interlocal agreement for the shared use of certain facilities. And whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that the CFB ISD property is no longer necessary to meet the current foreseeable needs of the district for operational or educational purposes. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District as follows. Section one, recitals, that the findings and recitals in the preamble, preamble of this resolution are hereby found to be true and correct and are hereby approved and adopted. Section two, surplus, that the Board of Trustees declares the CFB ISD property to be surplus property and authorizes the exchange of the CFB ISD property for the city property, as well as other good and valuable consideration, and authorizes the superintendent to negotiate and execute a real estate exchange contract with the city, as well as negotiating and executing an interlocal agreement to allow the district to continue to use the current playgrounds and parking at Farmers Branch Elementary School until such time as the current school is demolished, and for the city to use certain athletic fields for youth leagues when such fields are not in use by the district. Section three, superintendent's authority, that the superintendent or her designee is authorized to A, investigate the city property; B, upon satisfactory completion of the investigation, to tender closing and other costs to the title company to effectuate the exchange; and C, execute any documents necessary to effect the exchange, including the interlocal agreement, with the exception of the deed to the CFB ISD property. Section four, board president's authority, that provided the conditions of the exchange contract are satisfied, the Board of Trustees authorizes the board president to execute the deed to the CFB ISD property. Section five, further actions, that the district's administration is authorized to take any and all appropriate action to accomplish and effectuate the purposes of this resolution. Section six, public meeting, it is hereby found, determined, and declared that a sufficient written notice of date, time, place, and subject of the meeting of the Board of Trustees at which this resolution was adopted was posted at a place convenient and readily accessible at all times to the general public at the regular meeting place of the Board of Trustees for the time required by law preceding this meeting, as required, as required by Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, and that this meeting has been open to the public as required by law at all times during which this resolution and the subject matter thereof has been discussed, considered, and formally acted upon. The Board of Trustees further ratifies, approves, and confirms such written notice and the contents and posting thereof.
We have a motion from Ms. Rebaczek. Do I have a second? Ms. Hatfield will second, and thank you, Tara, for reading that and reading it so well. Any discussion? All in favor of the resolution? Any opposed? It is seven to none. All right. It is adopted. The last item on our agenda is comments from board members regarding the posted agenda. No comments except, can we go home? Yeah. All right. I will judge that we have reached the end of our agenda, and at 10:30, we are dismissed.